Good evening, everyone. Today is Wednesday, April 27, 2022, and this is a meeting of the Gloucester School Committee. Consistent with Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, this meeting can be conducted by remote participation. The public may not physically attend this meeting, but every effort will be made to allow the public to view and to listen to the meeting in real time and participate when necessary. If you are calling in on a phone, you can press *9 to request to speak. If you're watching on a computer or device, there is a radio scan button that you can tap or press to request to speak. Please use either of these options during oral communications to be recognized to speak. I want to mention the mission of Gloucester Public Schools is for all students to be successful, engaged, lifelong learners. And I ask that you join me with Mr. T. White. I just want to mention before we begin the next item, which is oral communications, that at our last meeting due to administrative error, the agenda for the April 13, 2022 meeting did not include all of the items that were discussed, specifically in East Gloucester slash Veterans Memorial Building Project Update and the superintendent's report, which was an update on COVID-19. These items will be covered, highlighted again this evening, so that it is in this meeting's record. But the recording is available from last meeting and the representation in its entirety is in the packets. That being said, we now move on to oral communications. If there is anybody in attendance that would like to speak, please raise your hand and we will unmute you. We have Erin McKay who would like to speak.
Hi, good evening. Thank you, Kathy. This is Erin McKay. I have two students at Gloucester High School, a child at East Gloucester School and another school out of district who will likely go to Gloucester High in a few years. I'm calling this evening because I saw on the agenda that there is a discussion of facilities this evening, and I wanted to express my support for the Gloucester Hockey High School program and their use of the facilities, specifically the rink. I have a JV-- this year I had a JV player. He's a 10th grader. And because of limited ice time allotted to the Gloucester High School hockey program, Liam, over 10 weeks, had 18 practices totaling 780 minutes. For-- sorry, I had to pull over on the side of the road from a lacrosse game at Masco. 12 of those 18 practices were only 35 minutes long. So to give you a little comparison, my MIT player, and Mites are eight years old, they had, in that same 10-week period for Cape Town Youth Hockey, the Mites had 26 practices totaling 1,300 minutes compared to the 780 minutes for JV. And then my Pee-wee player, who's 11, had 34 practices totaling 1,700 minutes. So my 11-year-old had more than, almost 1,000 minutes more than my 10th grader. It is my understanding that the hockey program has requested, on more than one occasion, that the rink be reserved from 2:45 to 6 o'clock, Monday through Friday, for high school hockey, girls, boys, varsity, JV, especially since the rink was dedicated to the use of our students in our community above and beyond renting it to outside programs. So even as a parent of Cape Town Youth Hockey, who will have kids who will practice through Cape Town Youth Hockey, I'm asking that it be considered to a lot more time to our JV players. What does this do? It gives us a solid foundation so we can continue to go far in the playoffs as we did this year. It's hard to get anything done in 35 minutes of practice. The mission of Gloucester School Sports says that the goal is to build individual talent and team formation, and that lacked for our 10th grader this year. They barely were on the ice and then they were getting off for the Zamboni. No time has been more indicative than this time of COVID to see the value of high school sports when it was Omicron and we weren't letting our kids socialize. They got to see their friends at sports. Even when it's not a pandemic, we value these opportunities of after-school enrichment and sports. Our kids are not on video games as much. They're getting their homework done. So if they're at the rink once a week for 35 minutes, it really takes away all of those opportunities that we value and that we need for our kids who play these sports. So I ask that when you look at facilities, there be a consideration of giving the Gloucester High School hockey program, both boys and girls, varsity and JV, 2:45 to 6 o'clock, Monday through Friday. Thank you.
Thanks, Erin. Hold on one second. I think Melissa wants to say something. So I'm just going to ask the committee, based on the testimony that was just provided to us, that we refer this to be enough for a discussion of ice time in general, because that's a discussion we haven't had in a while because of the lack of time over the past couple of years. So I'm going to request that this get referred to be enough for a discussion about time used for ice for our sports. Without objection? Okay, Erin, it'll be referred to our Building and Finances Subcommittee so we can get some more information.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have CR who would like to speak.
Hello.
Hi. Can you name an address for the record, please?
Catherine Ryan in 17 High Rock. And I have a couple of questions. I did have one of them ready the night that you guys went into a session for a long time. And then when we came back, the YMCA made a presentation and I was on the entire time. So one of them is a little older, but anyhow. The first one is how do the ZBA considerations related to density and the upcoming Todd overlay affect the new vets and EGS consolidation capacity for enrollment? And throughout the school process, people wondered about the schools, the new schools' planning to nearly the precise enrollment of those two schools combined with not a lot of wiggle room. So what does that mean if and when enrollment increases? That's my first question. My second question is, and a couple of points. Back in June 2020, after George Floyd was killed in Minneapolis, Gloucester school officials sent a press release to the local paper about a new Gloucester High School racial equity inclusion team. When I checked last spring, 2021, I was told that the high school diversity committee was meeting with the promise of unveiling their results beyond the committee to parents, the district, to the whole community. I'm wondering about that. I'm wondering about new committee members. Have you been filled in on the racist and civil rights abuses that the school was called out on to address by the estate, you know, the attorney general? Since then, similar examples have happened in Danvers and Quincy and across the state have come to light in various accountabilities. How is our district, this district strategically recruiting diverse candidates and addressing supportive environments? To date, none of you that I've seen or the district has shared an excellent article that was in the GHS Gilneter by Darcy Muller. And you guys have shared other members by others, articles by students. I strongly encourage sharing that one. And as the final part with this second question is, what outreach has happened to address the major oversight of the new building committee and planning department and other leadership bodies like the school committee, still lacking diverse representation and neighborhood stakeholder representation robust? You know, even the new attendance tracking that you ordered as a consultant group, the makeup of that group is not addressing, you know, any target needs of what's been identified by the state that O'Malley and the high school need to work on, and it's having a significant impact. The third question is, has the work for the GHS and O'Malley lobby upgrade, which was also security enhancements related to first-person shooter and safety, put in as a capital improvement budget item, awarded as a separate project for Doran Whittier, estimated at about $2 million? Has that been completed? Before the work begun, the PO, the contract included IT and security upgrades? Did those IT upgrades happen? And what is the status of that completion? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. All right, I don't see any other hands raised. We will move on to recognitions and I might start.
Yeah, I can show a couple while you're doing it.
So there was the opening of this sculpting self at the Kega Museum this weekend. And the museum worked with eighth graders from Gloucester, Rockport, and Manchester, Essex. And they created sculptures, no sculptures, based upon inspiration by Walker Hancock, who had done some project on baseball, or basketball figures. So I went on Saturday. I highly recommend. It was really quite interesting what people chose to do for themselves, you know, to kind of portray themselves. We have baseball players and kids studying and all sorts of kind of cool things. So I highly recommend checking it out. Of course, the museum is always beautiful and this exhibit is put up very professionally on the third floor. Just that have participated in that as well.
The, sorry, I went as well on the, I feel, last Saturday. As you can see on some of these, students were asked to come up with an activity of their interest, sporting or otherwise. And a number of them had, it's just a wide range. Some had quite a bit of emotion and feeling. You can see on this, like, one of the flip. So the one was great, I think wrestling, which is a great representation of a very popular sport. And then a very classic one in terms of baseball. And then here we have a dancer, I believe, and then also someone who's doing a favorite pastime of reading, but just a great, a very diverse representation of interests and approaches. Very impressive. A seal. Cool. Recognition. I'd like to recognize Tyler Weed, Elijah Saruth, and Seamus Buckley and Barrett Buckley. They recently competed in the M3 Challenge versus a mathematical modeling challenge for high school students in the U.S., England, and Wales. There's a virtual, a virtual challenge. Excuse me, they earned an honorable mention and a scholarship of $1,000. They were among 37 teams out of 612 teams, the top 6% to win an award with a scholarship prize. This year's challenge question was titled Remote Work, Fat or Future? Teams challenged a problem and had 14 hours to develop mathematical models to address the questions and write a paper justifying their assumptions, explaining their reasoning, reporting their solutions, and reflecting on their process and results. So congratulations to Tyler, Elijah, Seamus, and Barrett for a job well done. And also thank you to their font for her support of team and her, and her, and her science department. Science, math, I'm sorry.
Okay. Next, we have our Gloucester High School Student Advisory Council Chair Jenna Smith with us again. Thank you for coming.
Thanks for having me again. All right, I have a lot to tell you guys. So, first thing, I saw a lot of you guys at the NHS induction that took place on May, not May, March 24. That was very successful. Last year, when, like, my grade was inducted, we weren't able to have the full ceremony. It was really, we made the best of what we had, but we didn't have the candles. We didn't have, like, as many speakers. But this year it was really successful. It was great. No students dropped their candles, so the auditorium was not burnt down. So that was successful. This, like, the inductees from last year from my grade, our community and tutoring hours were turned in on Monday. So we're still members of NHS, but hopefully, I think every single person, I hope, has completed and turned in their hours. The elections for next year's NHS officers are taking place tomorrow, which is really exciting because we get to see the new president, treasurer, not treasurer, President, Vice President, Secretary, and Historian, I believe, are the four officers. So those are going to get elected tomorrow. Student council signups for next year have started. Elections are going to be soon. Right now, all the signup forms are just getting out there. People are signing up. It's good, getting started early. So then we have a bunch of senior stuff coming up, which I am particularly amped about. The senior countdown is down to 22 days, which is unbelievable because 22 days from now, I'm out of here. It's terrifying. I'm not ready to go into the, like, the real world. That's, ah, I can't even think about that. But tomorrow night is a senior banquet at the cruise port. Miss Clancy, I really hope to see you there. We can boogie all night. Can't wait. Prom tickets are being sold. Prom is on June 3 in Georgetown at the Black Swan. The voting from prom court is going to start soon. I believe that the voting is a mixture of both, like, staff and teachers and students, which is really exciting. So if you guys know any staff members, let them know to vote me for prom court because who doesn't want to be on prom court? May 27 is my last day of school. On that day, we're having a picnic, which is, like, run by the juniors for the seniors, and that's going to be a stage four. It's being catered by the Causeway, I believe. We're going to have karaoke, maybe a slip and slide. It's going to be a really fun day. So that's what our last day is going to look like. On that day, we're also getting our yearbooks. And as part of the yearbook staff, they look really good. I cannot wait for them to come in and, like, everyone gets to sign it. It's going to be so fun. Finally, spring sports are off to a really good start. I actually just got back from my track meet in Saugus. And let me tell you, it was probably one of the coldest meets I've ever been to. So it's kind of miserable. But overall, spring sports are off to a really good start. Most teams have a winning record right now, which is awesome. And that's all I have for you.
Does anybody have any questions? So generally, we see you for two more meetings, hopefully.
I hope so. I'm going to try and get here for the last two.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you guys for having me again. Bye.
All right, next item is the consent agenda. Does anyone have any items they would like to remove from the consent agenda? I wonder if we approved the consent agenda?
Second.
We need a rule called Vote. Maybe I'll call it.
I serve at your direction.
Okay, I'll call it. It won't be alphabetical, it'll be visual. Mayor Verga?
Yes.
Warren Wilson?
Yes.
Bill Melvin?
Yes.
Lisa Prince?
Yes.
Lisa Minya?
Yes.
Kathy Clancy, yes. Pass as you may. Okay. The next, so we're moving on to deliberations on educational issues. Our first item up is the report for the Gloucester Fishermen's Athletic Association. And I think it's been many years that we've actually had someone come speak to us from, from GFAA. So we're glad to have you, Krista Michelle, who is a president, so, yep. And along with her, we have Lisa Nogello and.
Thank you.
Tell us, cool stuff going on.
That'd be great. Thank you for having me here. And we are going to share our new mission for the Gloucester Fishermen Athletic Association. We recently updated this year. The mission of the GFAA is, oh, there we go. The Gloucester Fishermen's Athletic Association is a nonprofit 501(c)(3) community-based organization founded to support Gloucester student athletes. The GFAA is dedicated to the principle that all students in the Gloucester school system should be able to participate in the sport of their choice, regardless of financial circumstances. The GFAA is also committed to ensuring that those student athletes play and practice unsafe and maintain facilities and are equipped with the technology and equipment necessary to ensure competitive success. A little bit about what we have done over the past 15 years. Most notably, the renewal of Knoll Stadium is probably what you're most familiar with. That was a great collaboration between the city and a number of community stakeholders. But in addition to that, over the past 15 years, we've invested over $2 million in Gloucester's athletic programs. We have also enabled students to participate in athletics, regardless of their ability to pay. And we have provided scholarships to students over $200,000. The way that works, and I know a lot of people probably wonder, we meet with the athletic director every month, and he reviews it with us by season. So if there are students that haven't been able to pay in that season, he'll tell us how many and we'll just write a check. So that's how they, we never know what the students are. It's always vetted through him and through his staff. So that's how we determine how the scholarships are determined. We also have, and this is probably something a lot of people don't know, is an award for volunteers, and we recognize their extraordinary contributions. And we have a few, we haven't done it in a while. Pandemic didn't help that. But past recipients of the Avis Murray Award are Avis Murray herself, Austin Connors, Jim Munck, and Lisa Olson. So we, you should be seeing more about that, probably within the next year or our next rest of the year. So other things that we've done during the pandemic, we provided face coverings for all coaches. We partnered with Cape Town Live and helped fund their volunteer effort to bring sports to the community through their filming. And we invested in camera systems that are located at the Fieldhouse, Talbot Rink, and Knoll Stadium to livestream events. And they, I know that Cape Town Live does great work, but the cameras allow for streaming for all the sub-varsity sports. So you can see anything that's going on in any of those venues. And there is a subscription, but it allows anyone in the country to watch. So that's been great as well. Most recently, we've collaborated with Amy Cam on the Mental Health and Wellness Community Event. And we are committed to the well-being of our students. And we're looking forward to the next event in the fall. And hopefully, we're able to continue that a couple of times a year. And that partnership is really important. We, last month, we pledged $4,000 to the baseball team for refurbishment of their batting shelf. We invested $14,000 in a track timing system, state-of-the-art. So that was something recent. We also contributed $10,000 to Wrestling Man, and that program's really taking off. They had six athletes go to the championships this year, and that's tremendous for a relatively new sport in our schools. We also contribute to field improvements outside in the community, so for Little League and softball. And then we contributed $10,000 to the Young Legends Rink Development Program, and it's progressing nicely. If you've seen their photos, they paved this week, so that's coming along. So what's next for us? We did take a pause during the pandemic. And actually, we haven't fundraised and done a campaign since 2016. So all the things that we've done were with funds that we had available. But we have a new campaign coming up. And we're looking to rehab the fitness center at DHS. If anyone's been in there and you can kind of see some of the pictures, it's time. So we wanted to do this in 2019. We had a very important member of our community, a school community pass away. And if you knew Greg Swinson, he was a teacher at O'Malley, and he was in that gym every day. He mentored so many students and then became friends to many as an adult. And we would love to do this work in his memory. So we will, we have a campaign. Thanks, Bill, for helping us stuff on the last night. Going out, and we will be also working with Lisa and Doug in the tennis court project. And if you want to learn more about the GFAA, our website's being updated, but we're also on Facebook. And you should, you'll be able to see our projects there as well. So we are excited to introduce Lisa Nogello and Doug Kerr. They came to us with an incredible project, and it wasn't hard to say yes. We are providing them some logistical support. We are going to be their, the financial fiduciary for some of their donations. And we're very excited for you to see the next part and for what their class of 1988 is doing for this project. And I hope more classes come together to support some of our efforts as well. So thank you.
All right, I've already got that up. Thanks so much, Ben. So I'm Lisa Nogello, and I know most of you, but there are a couple of new faces for me. So I'm a very proud graduate of Gloucester High School from the class of 1988. I live in Magnolia. I returned to Gloucester after going off to Wellesley College, living on the West Coast, went to law school at UCLA, came back to practice in Boston. But I returned to Gloucester right before our first son was born. Max is a junior at Gloucester High School and a free-sport athlete. He's a, he's a big runner. He'll be captain of all of the running teams next year. My younger son, Anders, who is the fifth from the left up there, he grew about six inches since his picture was taken, but he plays soccer, basketball, and tennis. And we came back because where else would anybody want to raise their kids and send them to school but Gloucester? I'm currently a biotech executive. I'm with Surface Oncology, which is an immuno-oncology company in Kendall Square, Cambridge, and super happy to have the opportunity to talk to you about this project that Doug and I are really excited about. I'll let you introduce yourself.
So I'm Doug Kerr. I'm Lisa's husband. I'm a neuroscientist. I'm not a Gloucester native. I've only been here for about 15 years, but I absolutely love it. I'm a tennis player. I'm dressed the part because I am an assistant coach on the tennis team. We're having a blast. We're 5-0 already this year. And it's just really fun to be a part of this team and to see these kids grow. And so this project is really near and dear to our hearts.
And so I'll pause it for a minute on, well, that felt like we're here because of those kids, right? So Anders had never played tennis before last year. And then he decided that he and five of his freshman friends would come out for tennis. That's how Doug became an assistant coach. He was like, well, Derek's going to need help teaching all these kids to play tennis, let alone coaching them through a season. And they had such a great time, even in those early days. And the spirit on this team is really, it's incredible. It's infectious for everybody who engages with the program. And when I went to the first match and I saw the fancy bus from Swamp Scott pull up and the kids get out in their tennis whites, I not only went out and bought white shorts for the whole team because they were all different colors the first day, but I really tuned in when they had to do the, they do really cool introductions of the varsity players. And they have to do a whole segment on what is the call when the ball hits the crack in the court with the grass? So that's considered to be a let. And at each match at Gloucester High School, you have to give this whole instruction to all of the players who call their own shots, right? So they call their own lines. And I usually witness at least a dozen calls impacted by the courts and the cracks. So I was like, something must be done. Now, Mike, who has arrived, my partner in crime, had been thinking about this for some time, as had the coaching staff. So we just started talking about it last summer, and things really took off. So we're here for these kids and the girls' team as well. And we're here for the whole community, really. If you want to go to the next slide, because tennis.
Just while you're on that, Seamus, Tyler, and Elijah, who were called out because of their math award, are on the team.
It's a very academic group. They can have science and math tutoring on the sidelines if they wish, so. It works well. It works very well. But, you know, I really want to emphasize how important these courts are for the entire Gloucester community. My dad's been playing there for 50 years, right? There, this is a resource for the school, for the kids, for the youth, for the entire community. And so when we started talking about this, we were anchored around this idea that the student athletes should be really proud of these courts and will have a better experience of Gloucester High School tennis, support the growing program. Both the girls' and boys' teams are growing their strong. Both the girls' and boys' teams are growing. They're strong. They're performing really well. And also, if you, you know, you come into this past beautiful new Newell Stadium, new softball field. Fieldhouse is in great shape now. That basketball court is awesome. You swing around to the tennis courts and you're in like a wasteland, right? And people go by it all the time, not just to play tennis, because that's how you get to the public landing, which is one of the busiest public landings around, I'm told. So it really would signal a vibrant Gloucester to have these courts in the surrounding area redone. And of course, it supports tennis in the community and a lot of different activities, you can imagine, tennis lessons, different types of camps. People of all ages and abilities will use these courts. So we got really excited about that project. Next slide. As I was talking about it, in addition to Doug and Mike, who are not Gloucester class of eighty-eight, everybody else I was talking to was from the Gloucester High School class of eighty-eight. They're basically running the tennis program. Derek Eery, boys' coach, Gapsaputo, head coach of the girls' team, Phil Muller, my neighbor and classmate, is one of the other assistant coaches. And Craig Herman, who many of you know, is an architect, and he's kind of been advising us on some design matters. So we have this really amazing group of the class of eighty-eight that's kind of come together to push this project forward. And we're, we're on track to, to get it done starting after this tennis season. So we're super excited about that. This slide, I really want to focus on the crack and the tennis ball. Because that, that is all over the court. It's pretty impressive. We, we call Mike's team and we say, hey, guys, the grass is a little too long. Can you come and weed whack? So really important, there's the budget. Mike is nailing down some details. He's been a terrific partner to us throughout this effort. And because of his incredible experience with the Avis Murray Courts on the Boulevard, has a great playbook, knows the vendors, knows how to get this project done. So that's our, our estimated budget, and we're in good shape with about three hundred thousand already in hand. And going to the GFAA tomorrow. I'm going to Tim's house. We have, we have additional pledges already, including the GFAA's ten thousand dollar pledge, which is intended to spark the class of nineteen eighty-eight giving. And we're kind of doing a soft launch on the community campaign right now to the class of eighty-eight and the tennis families. After this meeting, we'll open it up to the larger community, and I'm partnering with Avis and JJ Bell and Dick Wilson to kind of talk with local businesses. So we're in that phase, but we've got a great head of steam and already have enough funds committed such that we'll be able to get it to the city, get the contract signed, and get this project rolling. You don't have to go through this one. I know we're sort of pressed for time, but lots of stakeholders have already been consulted. I spoke with Val Gilman this morning. We are going to be speaking with the city council. I now know the process for the next steps in terms of the, you know, how the money flows. So we're in terrific shape with the spring of twenty twenty-three, which is the class of nineteen eighty-eight's thirty-fifth reunion year. I don't know how that's possible, but that will be the debut season for the tennis teams on, on the new courts. Next slide. These are more administrative matters we'll be discussing with the city council in terms of naming the courts honoring Stephen B. Ross, to whom the courts were dedicated back in, I believe it was nineteen ninety-eight, if I remember correctly. We'll be consulting with the Ross family as part of this process. That's important to all of us. Some kind of guidance about the use of the courts and, and the management of the courts through Brian Lefato's team, the athletic director. Want to take this one?
Well, I mean, I think you said it, but it's just so exciting to see the interest in the community in tennis. I, I can imagine camps. I can imagine people of all ages and abilities. When I was a kid, between college years, I did this thing called College for Kids. I can imagine tenant, swimming, GMGI, a really cool, vibrant community for kids in the summer, some tournaments, and I, I just think it's really exciting. Tennis is such a lifelong game that it's, it's, it's good for everybody.
Right, schematic. The next slide, I think, is just a fun picture of the girls' team. Does anyone have any questions?
When was it last resurfaced?
The courts were built, Avis believes, in nineteen fifty-five. They were only significantly repaired one time. And we believe that's around the time they put in the light posts. And at that time, the light posts were not anchored deeply enough in the ground beneath the courts such that the wind on the lamp post caused even more buckling and cracks to occur. So it's a project that is long overdue. And the next slide has a picture of the project team. There we are, class of eighty-eight. We're gonna put that in our letter to the class because everyone's like, people want to see what you look like now. So that'll be there, another crack, and thank you for your time.
I do know Coach Gary, you know, it's very much a welcoming score for people to try it for the first time.
Yeah, it's one of the amazing things about this team. You have a whole range of players. You have some, I mean, you have, the way tennis works, you've got a small group of varsity players. Is it seven play varsity? So three singles, two doubles each match. Then you got JV and they play doubles. And you have such a range. Some people are beginners, some people are experts, but they all support one another and have this incredible culture. It's really a, a fun thing to observe.
Mayor Berger, that's his hand up.
Yes, I, I don't have a comment. I just wanted to say, just give a little background. First of all, the GFAA, because I'm proud to be one of the founders of it, and back in around two thousand six, those were the good old days. We had to make a lot of cuts on the school committee, and one of the things we had to do very reluctantly, and I can tell you it wasn't popular, was to start having athletic fees. And the hope when we made that decision was, and we said that at school committee meetings, maybe some nonprofit will start up to, to take care of this. And unfortunately, it didn't happen, but Jonathan Pope and I sort of got the ball rolling. And then we got Dick Wilson involved, and then the ball just started rolling really fast because everybody here knows Dick Wilson, knows what he can do. And then Jim McKenna, just to give a little credit, he's the one who helped us with the five oh one C three documentation. So I'm really glad to see that fifteen years later, it's, it's still going strong. And Kristen, I can't see you very well because I just see the one little block with the whole room, but I'm glad to see it survives. And I did meet with Doug and Lisa, I guess it was early in April, I didn't see the exact date. But this sounded like the perfect candidate for what we've done in the past with the partnership that made the renewal of Newell a, a reality, you know, this public-private partnership. Because as I said to them, if they had come to me and said, we need five hundred thousand dollars to fix the tennis courts, that just was not in the cards for the city to say, well, let's do that. But this is a way it can happen, you know, with the full support of the city and the public going forward. And I'm not a tennis player myself. I don't have the needs for it, but I'm, I'm very excited to see this project through. And the city's ready to help in any way we can.
Thank you.
Thank you. Kristen, first of all, thank you very much for the GFAA's ongoing support of our athletes, our school, the community. I may be the last one to find out about these things, but just in the sense that Ian or you need a better week should help you. Or work with you to make sure that the whole community knows about how much you do for our schools, our students. Because I've got a feeling, although many people are in the know, it may be a very well-kept secret.
I think it might be.
Yeah, yeah. So, but we'd love to help, help with that because it's such, such. You support some of these. And Lisa, Doug, great to meet you. And really, thank you for knowing the team so well and knowing the benefits so well, not only for the student athletes, but also for the community, for the community. Thank you for your leadership on this. It's gonna be fantastic.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Awesome. Exciting. Well, thank you for being here. We appreciate you taking your time out of your busy lives and joining us here.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Always welcome to stay.
The next order of business is facilities planning, and we have Mike Dale, the Department of Public Works Director, who has joined us. We appreciate all of your trust.
Okay, so Mike and I are gonna get resulted together, okay? We've done a lot of work together over the past few months to figure out sort of just what the universe is of capital projects that are coming. And I just want to go through some of this and we'll sort of tag team, but ultimately, both here to answer what questions the committee has. So we'll go over these pieces, the summary of the planning process to date. Our goal of having a capital plan, a few highlights of the planned capital improvements. We hope to, in terms of annual reporting, and Mike should give us updates on the minimum volume of repair projects. So just to summarize the process so far, so Gary Frisch and I met with each principal, first transportation and nursery food service. We identified our, our needs for capital improvements, furniture and summer maintenance. We developed a comprehensive list of all of those and then worked with Mike and Joe Lucido, embedded that with them. Obviously, they knew about many of those. I'd already, already working on many of those, but they also gave us a lot of legal information in terms of, you know, shaping that, understanding timing, timelines, but also understanding where things were just unrealistic, I'll put it that way, which is of course very, very helpful. Together, so we found, but by that, from that back and forth, we had, we also discussed funding process and how to do that with the city. We're together, we're together with the city on that. And we finalized a list of capital projects for FY twenty through twenty-six, shared with you, sharing with you today, obviously. Our goal essentially, the schools at least have a five-year capital plan, capital facilities plan, and this is really together is, you know, first of all, it's a living document. It's gotta be revisited and revised annually together. It's schools, Department of Public Works, the city administration. And we're doing that in order to ensure that we provide high-quality facilities to support learning, student engagement, and high-quality instruction. It allows us, and I say us, meaning the city, DPW, and schools, to work together to plan, prepare for, and fund capital improvements on a regular, on a home basis. And maintain our, our building infrastructure for the long term. As we have said, and I've said again and again, DPW has been doing a great job. You know, the years Mike has been here and really upgraded our repair maintenance schedules and making sure that things get done on a time basis, but also really looking to maximize the supply spades. And having a regular capital planning process like this will help us do anything better, do it in a planful way. So a few important things, it's a living list. We update annually by us working together. DPW and, and the schools, it'll be aligned with the budget process. And in terms of just adjusting the plan, it will have to be just year to year based on either new projects that come up, timelines that can be hit because everything, you know, including the pandemic or supply lines, supply chain. But also just in terms of where we're going to be progressing things, you know, or not. The other thing a plan does, it allows us to get going on the out, out, on the projects that are in the outgoing year, outline years, and doing the work we do now so they happen on schedule and on time, basically. And then the most important piece in terms of, of the planning is that we can, we're hoping to have, we're together on capital appropriation each year. That's a belt based on this joint project. And we're going to say to do that over time, rather than every year coming to, you know, to develop a request, which has worked very well, especially with Mike's leadership, but have an ongoing appropriation that we can essentially know, count on, rely on, and then plan. But that's gonna take some work, work together. Mike, anything you want to add on that in terms of just capital planning or the value of it, or just what you see works?
I think capital planning is a relatively simple exercise. Funding, that's the most difficult piece of it. We can collaborate on a list of needs and wants, but oftentimes, those needs and wants borrow pace on the extreme that we have. So I think having a reasonable list and dedicated funding on a periodic basis, whether it's annual or biannual, whatever it may be, be a good way to guarantee we get for most of these capital projects as certainly the priority ones. And again, hopefully get us some of the wants, not just the needs.
So in terms of getting into some of the things that we're planning for, and, and, you know, many of these are in the works, because these are some things we're hoping to get accomplished in FY twenty-three, and you know many of these. And we refer to them, complete and place the student lockers, a project that was begun a number of years ago. Refurbished bathroom, so, so that, the exterior painting of Plum Cove and Beeman. And repairing the modular buildings, those are all, those are funded from a city council approved law order that happened in December twenty twenty-one. So a few months ago. Refurbishing bathrooms at, at the high school, that's something that Mike and DPW have been, have really brought to our attention. I would say, I mean, the, the high school knows of the need, but that's something that they've been working on. They have submitted a capital request to the city to do that this summer.
Which Mayor Berger has forwarded a half million dollars to the city council to do tonight.
That's right. That's, that's one of the worst things that happens.
So Mayor Berger forwarded a half million dollar authorization to spend on the building maintenance stabilization fund that went to council on Tuesday, referred out by the finance, and it's a relatively simple transfer. And then we can set to pick away at projects.
That's great, great news. Thank you, Mike, for your work. Paying the play there in front of modulars or something we've done a little bit, some pieces of over the past year. I shouldn't say DPW's done. So a piece of that over the past year for patching. But I'm talking to Mike, I think we get that done after the monitors at even are, are, that project's completed. So it wouldn't make much sense to do it prior to. And some things that carpeting in common areas and pass card access that additionally is here at the high school. Carpeting in common areas, the preschool, those are the things that, on, on the more comprehensive list that you have as part of your packet, you see that there are some things that are jointly working together on, and are led by the city DPW. And some are, and are really with the schools to fund and also contract. In many of those cases, we're responsible for the funding. We still work with DPW in terms of their, their support and their help on specs, on working with, you know, on-call contractors or folks they know in the field, all the work. So they, they help us in that way as well. But we're responsible for doing the contract, finding the funding, and then making sure we're executing. The carpeting, the common areas, and the pass corridor examples of, two examples of, they're in our, in our house, our bellywreck. But maybe working with, and have to collaborate with DPW. For example, in pass card entrances, we would do the work and get, get the work done and contract it. But it has to coordinate and integrate because DPW controls the electronic system of our, of our accessibility stuff. That's another way we work together. Any questions on these points for myself or for Mike?
So just two notes, you didn't mention the playgrounds, which are on here.
Oh, right.
The homecoming playgrounds. And just a question on the preschool carpeting. I could be wrong, but I don't think we resolved the issue of the future of that building.
You're not wrong with that.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, so just wondering about investing in that building.
These are some areas in administrative offices which are essentially torn up right now. So I, as you know, and I've said before, we are hesitant to invest in, have anybody, the city invest in that building because it's, it's a lease space. But in this example, we have to look into repair, essentially repairing or maybe replacing these areas where it's, it's really.
It's a short-term hazard.
It's a short-term hazard.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. In terms of the playgrounds, so those, Gary's leading their project. In terms of the playgrounds, so those, Gary's leading their project. Working closely with the PTO leaders and the principals and an engineer. And working through that, getting, moving towards a process, I have big documents ready. Those are still, they're on schedule. They, they, it may be extended because of timelines and availability of installers and just in the fall. But they're also very short-term installations and the principal will worry about that. We may have to allocate some additional dollars from ESAR on that, but that's part of the thing, the cost and scope. Sorry, any other question on, yeah?
Yeah, Mike, I don't think we've had the pleasure of meeting, I'm feeling no, seeing, seeing the no one. If the money is approved by the city, is the five hundred thousand dollars, is that, is that for the high school refurbishing and O'Malley combined? It's dedicated to schools, to schools. So this is a quest for school repairs. We've always doors from repairs, that'll suck up, like, pretty quickly. We spent probably half that on O'Malley, it's running twenty, about one, two, three, four, six bathrooms done.
So then just same version twenty-three, again, some of the highlights. So, you know, we're working on window door replacement, which is an MSBA project. That's in the feasibility phase at this point. And we're actually having a meeting tomorrow with our product manager and architect, next steps and mapping out the timeline. They shared with us a timeline, perhaps give a further update, you know, what would be in that means that are coming up. So, so that's, that's in the beginning stage. The next step on that really would be a meeting presenting at the MSBA meeting in August. So that's going to be the evening that feasibility phase done by before that. Repair modular buildings, I have Plum Co., Mike will give us an update on that in a little bit. Our, obviously, new school, on schedule, on budget, we're opening. Refurbished auditoriums, this is a, O'Malley in the high school. This is another example of DPW starting a process and they're looking into some costs for, you know, for flooring and seating. But then may be able to also expand the project through seeking private, private funding as well. So to be able to help us, helps us with the beginning of that, in terms of getting the basics, essentials, and then we might go further. Other things are related to access, so lifts, the high school in Beeman. These are, and the work we'll be doing in FY twenty-three to repair, Congress sees in FY twenty-five is there on the right-hand side. Food drip service generator, generations, the sound system, the middle cafeteria, the lifts. Those are things where we have to, you know, spec out in the upcoming year and also identify a funding for in order to get them done in FY twenty-four. And then see if we can pull up those pieces as well. But, but the value of having this plan is we know what work we need to do to start this year on the projects that may happen twenty-four, twenty-five. Or if there's T dot to beat that, as Mike said, it could have been more that, of all that, the most important things and funding, you can't do it without the funding. So you understand until the progress is, you know, mostly scoped out. Annual reporting, what we'll do is in the fall, report back, like we did, I think, this past fall, perhaps last two falls, actually. Just on what were they, what DPW was able to accomplish in supporting of the schools during the summer, summer months. That was obviously our hugely important months in capital improvements, repair and maintenance. And then sometime in the March, April range, you know, March, April range of the following years, we come, as we are tonight, to give you an update on, on the capital improvements. The plan, because it will update, be revised each year, and then also work together with myself, director of school committee, the mayor, city administration, city council, obviously. That's last piece is just, Mike, if you can give folks an update on where things are with Beeman modulars, that'd be a big help.
Sure, so the assessment of Plum Co. and Beeman took place over the late winter. And we determined that Beeman was worse condition than we thought, Plum Co.'s better condition than we thought. In order to balance the money, we're going to focus even this summer and push Plum Co. off to next turn. Makes sense not to have too many things open and obviously we can't function without those twins, so many schools, so they have to be up and running once school begins. So the general contracting bid for Beeman was open today. Doesn't that at all price it yet, you know, I say who has it yet, because I don't know that. The file subbits were open two weeks ago. The value of this project requires that certain trades file separate bids that the general contractors filed subbit. So we've, you know, there's mechanical, electrical, there's some metal work involved, proven work. So that's, that's done, we should be able to sort through the bits by this time next week and do the award and contract within, within the week to follow. So it's, it's moving along, it's on schedule. A good team working on this project, it'll be success.
I'm on the Beeman project, can you tell me what that's going to look like over the summer? So what, if I was to walk up to Beeman's school, what would I see going on?
You'll see dumpsters, you'll see staging, you'll see piles of material. It'll be coordinated off, it's not a place for people to play.
And this is something that will have, we have during the week, like, and how long, what's the time we plan on everything?
We're going to need every day we can, once this starts, because obviously we can't begin until the students are gone. So we have a very short window to get everything completed. And any delay in materials or delay in conditions can really put this thing sideways. So it's, it's tight, summers aren't a great time to try to get everything done. But that's, these builders are used to that because they do other school tech work. So it'll be congested, it'll be busy site. Typically, these guys work, contractors work Monday to Friday, seven to, you know, four hours, they can work six to eight if they chose to, one of the city ordinance. I don't think they'll work a second.
Just curious, and it seems like there's a lot of projects starting and I can't help but wonder, knowing delays that I'm aware of in the city that are preventing projects from happening on time. I, I guess I get concerned if we start a project, can we complete it in time? You know, is it worth starting if we know, if we can't get the materials immediately? You know, I'm not trying to deter anything, but I just want to, I guess, hear the confidence from you, the trusted soul that once we start this, it's going to happen by the time school opens.
We've looked at various materials in the meantime and we've actually substituted some of them just because the lead time is too long. So that's kind of been thought of already. I can't say for certain that we won't run into something else.
Yeah.
You run into stuff all the time. But again, we have a really good team on this, huge pre-qualified contractors bidding on this. And hopefully that the, the low bid is qualified and we can use them.
Thank you.
Then we've discussed how, for example, the rooftop units of Beeman, because the time is so long to this point, wouldn't, wouldn't do, I think, I think it's so that he wouldn't be able to do the work this summer, but prepare for, finish that Beeman, the fall tone.
That's, you know, there needs to be new roof put on, the modules. That will require the rooftop units removed, which are the heating and cooling units, air handlers. Those will be brought down to the ground, though, roof's done, and those we've replaced, those will be put back. With the understanding that when the new ones are available, the contract will be back to install new rooftop units. Because those are not a short lead time, those are probably six months. And they work, but they are, they're, they end of the life expectancies. Makes sense to kind of include those now, prepared for the installation, the new ones, use the old ones until the new ones are available.
Just following up on Melissa, so we also have a Gordon program this summer at Beeman. I'm just wondering about sort of, it's a big project and we have summer programs at Beeman. So I'm just wondering how, like, parking noise, like, how that's going to interact with the students who are there.
Great, yeah, just, I do want to mention that we're moving the bulk of the summer program over to West Parish for this, for the summer.
Okay.
And I talked to Gary about putting some extra contracted cleaning services in place. Because of the shorter turnaround and the amount of kids will be in the building in West Parish. So some additional days, weeks, I think, even to, this was, talking with Joe Lucido about any extra help that might be needed to turn page around quickly. So there will be a small footprint at Beeman and it'll just be the, the summer science and engineering camp. But that's just the two to three classrooms rather than using a lot of it's cool.
One of the things we're gonna, we haven't discussed yet, but it's just a process for getting folks out of the waters.
We'll have a pre-construction meeting with you, team, the building principal, the architects, and you can put the layout. Plans or transition plans that are necessary.
Questions?
Thank you, Mike, thank you for coming.
Thank you, we appreciate it. It's always nice to have you come because we are so appreciative of how smoothly everything's going.
Appreciate that.
Without the back and forth, it's, you know, it's, it's, I think, we're getting a lot of that.
Thank you.
The other was trying to advocate. Okay. The next order of business is the K five literacy pilot update, great boxes that we can leave it, but we have some more. Yes.
Yes, I get the, I get the job of probably getting thanks from the committee for all the work that, that, and hundreds of hours worth it of the people that've done. So I'll try to do my best, as I usually try to do, to acknowledge the work that they do. Though, as you can imagine, it doesn't come close to what's happening behind the scenes. And it's also one of my more enjoyable times of the year is when we get an opportunity to, I don't know, and present our work. But also have people who've been doing the work get to be in front of you. I know you appreciate it very much. And I also want to thank the school committee for being such a great audience. Because the only way I can get people to come is because their colleagues share, you know, it's such a boost to go to the school committee. And that's just not the case with all school committees. And to be able to walk away from a school committee and really feeling energized and ready to do more is, is great. So thank you for, for bumping to eight o'clock, that was excellent timing. So a few acknowledgements, I, I just, actually, to get started, we're here to talk about the ELA pilot that I have mentioned earlier that we would, we were undergoing all year long. And you asked for a report at the end of that to see what we had selected and where we go from here. Along that way, there are too many people to, to, to list. But we have an entire pilot team of twenty, twenty-plus people when you include addition. We had nineteen classroom teachers and we also had Title I teachers, English learner teachers. We had, you know, additional supporting staff who came. Maura Donahue, who you've met, who is working at the middle school, also attended a number of the meetings. So that there would be some crossover to the middle school potentially, just as far as gathering information. Melissa Orkin from Crafting Minds, who we have mentioned before. Has worked very closely with the reading coaches for a number of years now, as they're, in some ways, their personal consultant. And she absolutely loves working with Gloucester because of the reading coaches initially and now because of the teachers she met. So she's been an incredible asset, she's at Tufts University as well as, as her own consulting firm, Crafting Minds. And so we have a large group of pilot team working since last, I don't even know when. It was a summer, really summer kickoff meeting and they have been working steadily, hours and hours of work in their schools. But also after-school meetings. And you're going to see a little bit about the kind of work that they did. Well, we've collected some of the thoughts that they recorded along the way. So some posted, virtual posted notes from November and their, their results and their thoughts from, from, you know, by April. Henry Wenzel and Shannon Camo are two teachers who were pilot teachers and were kind enough to join us tonight. And Adrian Ricky Munn and Melissa Francis, and you've met them before. They are literacy coaches from West Parish in Gloucester and they've been in front of you a number of times. So thank you to the four of you for, for coming tonight. We have been talking about having to, you know, research, we've had reading street for ten years, maybe even a tiny bit more than ten years. And, and it was time to take a look at what was out there, what has developed, how we were doing, how our, our results were looking. And if there was room for improvement. And as we have shared over time, you've been great cheerleaders for, until twenty nineteen, which was the last official marking point. And we've had five years of steady increase at the elementary level. I showed you at one point a, a graph that looked like that with an average percentile ranking state. How we compare at our elementary schools to other elementary schools in all across the state. In twenty thirteen, Gloucester Public Schools, elementary schools had an average rank in-state of thirty-nine point five percent. By twenty nineteen, which was the last official measure, it had risen from thirty-nine point five to fifty-eighth percentile in the state. And that is a really incredible steady increases both in math and literacy.
Can you say that again a little louder? Thank you.
I, I do on this slide. You'll notice though that, that we've made really good steady progress, it's a great trend line. There's a little bit of beginning to see some flattening and that is when it's time. At the IT guys, I could just imagine them on the end of this line, put, put the top on if you're happy. So just, we have strong and early literacy indicators, first grades. And, and the teachers and coaches can talk a little bit more about this in detail. I'm sure you'll have plenty of questions, I prepped them already, although they're, you ask a lot of questions. Seventy-five percent meeting or exceeding benchmarks in Devils eight composite, seventy-five, third grade, third grade, fourth grade. A little bit lower at sixty-two percent, a fifth grade, even though our MCAS scores are still quite strong. And fifth grade is, is at or well above the state, state average in, in ALA. Some of the, there's a little bit of a decline that begins to become apparent. And by sixth grade, that performance is not just flattened out, but is, has declined relative to their peers in the state. We also know, and have known for a while, that we're not just talking about a sixth grade or seventh or eighth grade problem. We know that there are foundational pieces that need to be in place for, for kids to be successful in middle school and high school. And this incredibly dedicated group of people is, was not comfortable resting on indicators of really good and continued performance. They wanted to get under the hood and understand what can we do more to prepare our kids for the challenging kinds of texts and thinking and discussion and writing that they encounter in middle school and high school. And that's a lot of the work that they've been doing is to try to understand how we can strengthen that. So that performance in later years is that much better. so that performance in later years is that much better. Over to you, Melissa. No, no, sorry, Adrian.
Can you to the next slide?
Sorry.
That's fine, great. So as Greg was just saying, we have all of this data and we have all this research. We are in an age of lots of research, which is really wonderful. And so we're using all of that to really inform our decisions throughout this entire process.
I'm sorry, on my screen, it shows the reading room, which is why I couldn't understand. And I didn't look up there, so I'm going to try it again and see what happens.
Perfect.
It's okay, it's now one slide behind what's on the screen, so I'm just gonna.
Might have it in presentation mode so you can see what's coming.
Excuse me?
You may have it in presentation mode so you can see what's coming.
Well, I'm sorry, but it was, it was right on target.
Melissa Francis with the technical.
Yeah, that needs to be recorded.
All right, so iTunes. Anyway, I can talk about Scarborough's reading room, so.
It's a doorway.
So this slide, this previous slide that will come up is all about that research. So Paul Scarborough was a researcher, okay. I'll keep talking. Was a researcher back in the nineteen nineties, tried to figure out a way to explain to educators and to parents about the really complex process that it is to learn to read. Prior to that, it was sort of this statistical process. Who knows, I don't remember how I learned to read. I'm not sure many people do. We have so much information and so much research to, and really cognitive research, neurocognitive research to really lay this out in layman's terms. It's really, and this infographic was created based on all of that research. And so what we're finding and what we know in Gloucester, the first part of this reading room in that, that orange section is the word recognition section. That's where the foundational skills are. That's where that seventy five percent median exceeding benchmark in K one and two district wide. Like that, we have that down. We've been focusing on that for the last decade and more. And then this other part of the learning to read strand is this language comprehension strand. And Reading Street, which we know as teachers, really lacked so many of these vital components that are interwoven in learning how to read. So our students were learning and gaining these foundational skills for recognition and then flatlining when it came to fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. And it looked like it was a middle school, high school problem, but it really is an elementary school problem because we need more direct explicit instruction in language comprehension. So this is what really spurred us on to research and dive into trying to adopt a curriculum that focused on this language comprehension portion of, of reading.
I did.
It did.
For some reason.
What is the, I remember. So what does the research say? And what, when we were thinking about and looking into adopting the curriculum, we used priorities. Discussed, based on the research, discussed the priorities in vetting a curriculum that would meet the needs of our students is based on research. And so it really comes down to these three really main tenants. That discourse or a language development is huge, the speaking and listening. Intertraction between students and teachers, students and students is really an integral part in learning and playing the foundation for learning how to read. It's a vital piece of that. The building of background knowledge and comprehension, that a lot of our students in middle school and high school don't have enough of this background knowledge, so they can read the words, they know the sounds, they can put it all together, they can read the words, they have some basic understanding. But we're really teaching more of a narrow skills-based approach, like what's on the main idea. This is how you make inferences as opposed to this is the topic and all the complexities of this civil rights movement and all of the building, all this background knowledge about the people involved and the cause and effect of all of those on our society and really played out in a world today. So that's where the background knowledge and comprehension really comes in that was missing, that really was missing from our curriculum and is so important in order to become skilled readers. And the last part is that writing instruction, that skilled readers are skilled writers and vice versa. And in order to really cement the background knowledge and comprehension into our long, long-term memories, that writing instruction needs to be solid. That's where that's cementing into our long-term memories, all the background knowledge and being able to then retrieve it later on when you're in high school, like, oh, in second grade you learn about the civil rights movement. It's really this interconnectedness between all of those pieces. So that was the basis, those are the priorities that we were using in order to vet a curriculum. I know that really was working. And this was just a quote that really kind of sums it up nicely. Children develop language through fine-tuned conversational interactions with adults who set sophisticated vocabulary and advanced language models. Not as dumb and down, but really asking students and teachers to use the highest lexicon that they have available and then explaining what that means as opposed to, you know, just really shallow conversations and shallow language, basically. So that's really led us to this next part, which is the process. So I think Melissa is going to talk about the process. Any questions? I'm sorry, there was a lot of information. About decades of research I tried to put into these lines.
So I'm just trying to follow all those. I know, like, wow, and I'm like, wow, this is awesome, but what's really going on here?
Yeah.
So this is work that's being done at the elementary level right now or?
Correct, correct.
It's at only.
At the elementary.
At elementary. So I guess my question is, how, this is great. So we, the elementary is on the path, but what are we doing to bring the older kids up to speed with this knowledge and that you're finding out, using these priorities for the elementary school level? What are we doing to?
It's coming. The middle school is already engaged in this kind of process. And, and so they're, they'll be, they'll be sharing their findings and.
I'm just so happy to the elementary, I'm like, but what about everybody else? So how is this gonna get infiltrated to this?
And it's on your way.
What importance that, that, that you touched on was, as well, as you said, it's part of the element, what's happening and mainly is part of the elementary challenge, okay? And so with what, I was going to get to in terms of the curriculum, we'll better prepare and focus in our, our sixth graders, since the rising of sixth graders will be further along, you know, right now. Now, and then again, there's work which, you know, to be done at O'Malley, that's out. As we said again and again, all the work that elementary students have been doing for the past seven, eight years or so, that whole process, which has now been repeated twice, you know, Reading Streets and now Wisdom Wisdom, needs to happen and it's, it's starting to happen because of what you, in ELA and then math and science, social studies at O'Malley. But it's, it's, it's all, you know, what we learned at, at elementary through the fantastic work of our teachers and coaches and good leadership and support, really, we've got to take those lessons in the future.
And this is a long, it is a, and we, and we have to be invested in this process for sure. I mean, this is not going to be, oh, years turnaround time, now we're going to see MCAS scores. This is like a three to five year process before we really start to see, like, you know, the fruits of our labor within this. Because it's this vertical building of knowledge, K through five, and hopefully, like you're saying, like six through eight.
I just, I just don't want to see like one group doing very well and now this one missed it, you know what I mean? So how do we help though, how do we bring that knowledge to the, to the kids that have passed the stage that we're at now?
I want to dovetail on what she's saying, but I'm in the opposite direction. Because I don't think, you know, it could start a lot sooner than kindergarten. You know, what you said about the shallow language kind of thing that you were talking about kind of hit home with me because when I was raising my little boy, I didn't dumb down my language one bit. I used scientific terms, I challenged him, he's become quite articulate, incredible vocabulary. Pretty impressive, I mean, but, but I think, I mean, is there any kind of like early outreach to, to clue like parents into, you don't have to baby talk to your kids, you can have their babies.
Of course.
Use complex language.
You make it, you make a great point. We, we have discussed it, we have, we don't have a process yet for it, but obviously, parent support and outreach is vital to this process. So yes, at the elementary schools, but then, yeah, I mean, it would be wonderful. I wish I could sit at Beverly Hospital and remember.
Mr. Gold, no baby talk. You don't have to assume your kids eat baby talk.
Right, of course, yeah. And we also have to work with, you know, what we have too, right? So not everyone has that, like you're saying, that early language, rich language. So we have lots of students that are coming in with, you know, already behind the wall, really already behind. So we are really tasked with meeting them where they are and trying to really advance that, that language. Because it would be wonderful, obviously, to start as, as soon as possible.
Yeah. Just takes a little awareness.
Yeah, of course, yeah.
Oh, yeah, sorry, I was just, I don't want to go far down the rabbit hole, but Greg gave me a book a couple of months ago called The Knowledge Gap.
Yes, this is it.
Yeah.
Just listening to you, I connected the dots.
You got the Velcro balls happening, right?
And it doesn't really matter, you can set kids up in elementary school, give them all the, and again, I'm not speaking with any type of intelligence on it, but, you know, give them the framework, but if they don't have, I wrote it down, I wrote down background knowledge or language comprehension skills, then they go into middle school with kind of just a shell, without that shell being filled with knowledge. And the book, to me, really talked about how excited kids were about knowledge learning, like they were interested in stuff.
That's why we have our teachers here today, because they're just, I don't know who's more excited, the teachers or their students.
They're no more excited than I am because I'm not, I'm not the greatest reader in the world. I buzzed through that book in about four days and I was like, if, if every parent, every school administrator read that book, you would understand that gap that sometimes happens between elementary school and middle school. I couldn't have been more happy with reading it.
You, you teed it up perfectly. For what's coming in the middle of the presentation, you know, for sure. And by the way, we also had the, the author of Knowledge Gap spoke to all of our K through five teachers on March twenty ninth.
And I wasn't invited.
Here, at the end of this, you say, reach under.
The knowledge gap, pass it on.
So I just, so I know from my son's experience, this idea, I can really relate to this skill-based teaching in terms of literacy. And I think at the time that we adopted that and kind of changed, that was really needed at the time, right? But I do know from the kids, they, they kept begging for more science. They kept begging for, you know, reading passages that were relevant and interesting. You're in the library trying to pick out an interesting book, right? You're, you're trying to guide kids towards that content that they would find interesting, not the stuff they were learning in their ELA class. Because that was not particularly interesting, right?
Who goes to libraries, I want to learn more about main ideas.
Yes, so that's, but I think you make a great point.
Yeah.
Because we want to be sure that the pendulum doesn't swing so far the other way that we forget about those foundational skills that we actually need so that they can dive into the content. So we believe now that we have finally found that balance and we're going to be very cautious not to let the pendulum go. Because when I arrived teaching, it was thematic units and we realized, we were teaching them how to read however we wanted, you know, in our classrooms, and then we realized we needed that skills instruction foundational skills. And now we're realizing, wait, we swayed a little too far away from the content, let's get back to it. So we found that balance and I think we're in a really great place. So we're going to continue or we're never going to get there. So I have the fortunate pleasure of sharing the process with you, which I have to say, I had sleepless nights. And, you know, why not take on a huge task during the pandemic? You know, it will be fun, they said. But as you know, we did the knowledge gap, we were reading, we were doing the research and we knew it was something that was going to be worthwhile and it was something that needed to be done. So we started to put together a team and Greg will catch up.
I have to go back out every time and then back in, I apologize, keep going.
So the coaches started to buzz and we started to chat and we decided that we needed to start researching and finding some good programs that were out there. And as Natalie said in her book, there weren't very many, just even ten years ago. And now I, we're finding that there's more and more, but we narrowed it down to two after looking at three or four. And we came up with Wayton Wisdom and CKLA. And then we said, okay, we need to create a team and find interested teachers who are willing to take on this task with us and try them out. So we came up with a game plan of having half the teachers do CKLA and half the teachers do Wayton Wisdom. Sounded like a great idea. And there were bumps in the road for sure because then, you know, you really get invested in what you're doing and you find the love. But we kept rolling with it and we would meet twice a month. And we would have virtual meetings, we would have in-person meetings and we made them do surveys after survey after survey. And they're laughing because it's true, but we really wanted to capture all the good, bad, and the ugly. We wanted to find out the strengths of the program, the needs of the programs. We really wanted to get to the heart of it and we knew we wanted the timeline so we could start this low adoption because of purchasing, because of ordering, because of materials arriving, which unfortunately, these ladies know, we had a late start even with that because of materials arriving late, but did not stop the pilot team. I will give them a million kudos. Materials were arriving in October and they were still willing to just dive right in. Usually you want about a summer to plan and they had a day. It was really amazing, the work that was put in and all that was involved. There were, as Greg had mentioned, you can jump ahead to the numbers at a glance. Nineteen teachers that took it on. There were supposed to be twenty, but one changed a role, so that's why the odd number, just in case you were wondering. And we had additional support staff, but we had five hundred twenty plus students involved in this pilot as well. So they were getting the benefits of this content, knowledge, learning, even just in the pilot process. So that's pretty exciting when you think K through five across the district, five hundred students were impacted, which is really incredible. So like I said, we started out in September, are you there with me now? Nope. One more, one more.
And now it's a hundred forty three days, today was a hundred forty.
Yeah.
A hundred and forty three days that we've been. And why that is really a vital number, here we go, highlight there, a hundred forty three, just jumping in on that. It's because we talked to many other districts throughout this process, ones that have adopted Wayton Wisdom or CKLA, ones that were in the same process as we were. And we had different coaches call us, so teachers, we have two weeks to try out Wayton Wisdom and then have to make a decision. Or we talked to administrators who were like, well, we just decided on this curriculum for our, and for our district. And so we really wanted to lay the foundation here that we've never, I mean, I think in about twenty years in my time here, we've never had this thorough of a process with as many people, teachers, staff members, and time spent with the actual curriculum before making the decision. So it's, we're not going into it lightly. And I have to.
Adrian, what you just heard, and I'm curious to know, it's gigantic. It's a real big difference than what happens typically in schools, sadly, across the Commonwealth, across the country. This type of thorough process, this rare, is the absolute right way to do it. And I'm just couldn't be more pleased from all who worked with them because it's been, it has been done and will continue to be done a way that really supports teachers, helps them, you know, make good decisions, help us make good decisions and then hopefully help, help this teacher and students. But it is absolutely way to do it and it's rare, very, very.
So, and I have the ongoing joke with us where our teachers would run to us after the meetings and say, okay, what was the decision? Which way are we going? I'm like, you guys are making the decision, like, we can't tell you the decision, we don't know. You're deciding this, that's what all these surveys are about, right? So it was a process and it was hard to know which direction we were going. Some days we were thought we were going with one curriculum and then the other, which you're going to learn along the way. But Melissa Orkin and Greg really helped, you know, guide that, the coaches, the teachers, we really worked together. And then I am.
I'll jump on.
Yeah.
And the teachers are going to jump in, yeah. So Anne Marie and Shannon can jump in at any time, I'll just set us up and take it from there. So this was a jam board, it was a, we had a virtual meeting.
So um this was a jam board, it was a, we had a virtual um meeting in um November. And during that time, we had teachers at each grade level, regardless of the curriculum that they were using. But posted notes on this jam board, um, of things they were really excited about with the curriculum. It was November, some teachers did not have materials until August, October. Um, had only been with it potentially some some for six weeks, even less than that. Uh, so I wanted to just frame that before you um. Hear and and read some of what they were experiencing.
I am in third grade, so I teach third grade at Plum Coke, um, and so I work with all third graders, we do a co teaching model. So all of the third graders at Plum were involved in the pilot. Um, and to be honest, I think like the coaches had mentioned. When we received training over the summer, there was a lot of apprehension, it was a big shift from what we've done. And there was a lot of anxiety thinking about educating students and reading for nineteen minutes. Whole group and keeping them engaged and. Hearing from people who have used these materials before that the text is very challenging and. Students might not be able to read it independently, there was a lot of apprehension, a lot of concern. Um, and we very quickly found, although I think in November, we were still. Working our way through the bumps and. Uh, having our hard days and planning and whatnot and pacing and. That these students were more engaged. And were more focused and more excited about learning than I have seen in my almost twenty years here. They eat this material up. And it is so fantastic for all students, so we were really concerned about our struggling readers. These kids were able to participate in ways that I have never seen them participate in classroom discussion. They are the kids that need these materials and these types of books in front of them more than anybody. And this is the first time they're getting that because we used to think they couldn't decode it, so they couldn't, they weren't ready for that and they weren't ever going to get there. Um, and then kids at all levels are engaged and they are moving and they are growing and it was. Remark, it has been a remarkable. Experience to be a part of and to see that growth and that enthusiasm and that excitement.
I just highlighted on these uh note pages with the clouds, those are just a couple of callouts that I put on there and I I'm glad you mentioned. Students who weren't strong decoders before we think maybe they're not ready for.
They would spend their reading time working as a quotable reader.
That's the one of the ones that I I wanted to show you was. I've been thrilled to see friends who may not be strong decoders. Participated in an engaged and active way in the knowledge portion, being leaders and exuding confidence. And they were already starting to see that in in November that. You know, kids who might have been prevented from accessing that kind of rich content before. And you know, were able to do that and and very excited by that. Uh, you have these in your packet, so you can look through uh the notice and. Uh, fifth grade, um, a couple of callouts there too.
Absolutely, so um I teach fifth grade and I'm the nonfiction reading, writing, science teacher in my team. And my counterpart, Sarah Amadon, is the fiction, reading, writing, social studies teacher. And the program that I tried out was wit and wisdom and it ended up meeting our needs beautifully. Because in the older grades, they're expecting that our students are getting fifty percent um nonfiction text and fifty percent fiction text. And that's not always necessarily easy to do. It wasn't really easy to do with reading street because. The texts that they were reading wasn't really deep enough, it was usually just an excerpt. And the other problem was it wasn't really engaging. Um, for everybody and they were using, you know, basal readers. Um, whereas this time around, every child gets a book and it's theirs for the unit, so this is the unit that we're currently in. Um, there's a, I think a post-it note up there about um the Who's On First skin that the fifth graders do. Um, because they're reading the Phantom Tolan in fifth grade and then reading their narrative piece after reading the Phantom Tollbooth. And one of our E L Ls who is also on an I E P didn't really have a lot to say in class about it. But I ended up hearing from his home therapist that he was telling that to everybody after school. So it was really nice to see that he took it with him, even though he didn't show a lot at school, he took it with him. Um, the engaging piece is just tremendous. Um, the first part of the school year, we were looking at um Native American tribes. Um, and the Westward movement and the problems that came up because of that. So we've had some really in-depth conversations to the point where I had a student who's asked me now twice. Because it came up again in the Civil War. Ms. Wenzel, why are you talking so badly about the white people? And I said, I'm not talking badly about the white people, I said, this is just a part of history, I said, and hopefully what you're learning is that there's not just one part of history. There are multiple parts of history, I said, and I hope what you're taking from this is enough information that you can form your own opinions. So that was a little bit frightening for me at first because of the material that we were handed, we didn't know what they were going to do with it. But some of the best conversations that we've had this year are. My students in particular, learning the art of conversation where somebody has to speak, somebody has to listen. And then you actually have to say something back to that person so that they know that you were listening to them. And they're learning how to question and they're learning how to question, not simply with just yes or no answers. They're really asking each other in-depth questions, so that has all worked together really nicely. I will tell you that I think we unintentionally created this gap with our students. By giving them leveled readers based on what they could handle, thinking that's all they could currently handle on their own, right? Without our support and. My students this year were just so thrilled to all get the same book and they can all have the same conversations, so no matter where they were at. They could all have a conversation about the same topic. So I catch them sometimes on the way down to the cafeteria or outside to recess and they're having conversations about things that were happening in class, which is just. Amazing and what we really want for them, you know, you can't become analytical without actually having these conversations with each other.
And you you bring up that, I think it's a huge point, actually with both curriculum as well, it was this equity, creating this equity in most students. Um, which was really, I think, one of the most beautiful, you know, outcomes of this whole process.
Yeah.
I do. Uh, one of the things that I think is important is that uh the parents become aware that, hey, their kids are, you know, your kids are really excited about reading and learning. I mean, what's the conduit for that besides, is there, is a conduit outside of? The twice yearly parent conference teacher meeting where.
I've been using Class Dojo this year, which has the, and actually the students. Um, we're making these civil war posters, I think you'll see an example of it later on, but. They were actually able to use their Chromebooks, take pictures of their posters and then drop them into a portfolio on Class Dojo. And then their parents were able to go into the dojo and look at them. Um, and then while they're working, I've been walking around the room, taking snapshots of them doing different things and posting their work in their portfolio. So that their families can actually see it. Because I had one student tell me, you know, Ms. Wenzel, my mother asks me every day, what do I do at school and I don't know what to tell her. And I said, what do you mean, you don't know what to tell her, we just did a lot of things at school. She said, yeah, but I forget by the time I get.
While you're in this uh area and you're talking about um. The what students are encountering and the question you just asked is, we can address in a moment. I I just skipped ahead one slide, we then met again in April. To um uh to that followed the March P D. And um also uh for that professional development, the teachers shared. Uh, much more extensive, so we get the the the. Um, posted notes from November with initial impressions and now they can just slide right into. These are the kinds of things and you can see some pictures. They brought some samples, now you can go right into the heart of of the curriculum and and what you explored over the year.
And just to piggyback on that, the program itself does have like parents' letters that you can send home that like talk about and preview the topics. Name what the expectations and objectives are of the, they're not called mo- uh units, they're called modules, so there's four modules.
As suggested books, um, I have heard from more parents this year about what we've been doing because the kids are going home so excited. About the content, they are checking books out of the library, I just had a student, uh, you'll see later, I have the materials with me. Um, we've been focused on a module on space and we focused and we looked at really deeply the Apollo eleven moon landing. Um, and I had a student go to Cape Canaveral over this past vacation and came back so incredibly excited. To bring this gorgeous book that they bought that had to have been a forty five dollar book. Of the Apollo eleven mission that was signed by two astronauts that were at Cape Canaveral, like they are that. Enthusiastic about the content and they understand now, I had asked my students prior to this meeting. Um, what they thought I should share with the team when I went to this meeting. And they said that they now understand the purpose of reading, that before this program and when we were doing reading street and reading a book, a story week and. They didn't understand that reading was to learn and comprehend and take with you the information from what you had read and now they do. And so they're going home talking about this and the parents are learning along with their students and their contacts are saying, I never knew, I didn't know about this and. Um, so they are hearing about it and we do share those letters and and student work and. I think because we have been so enthusiastic throughout the process, we have taken a lot of pictures and shared them electronically with families and. Um. So one of the things that we haven't talked about that it was a huge strength of this program that we were really excited about is the writing as well and you have read that in the knowledge gap. It was part of what Adrienne shared with you. Um. Every day the students are, it's all around the same content and around the same learning, everything is very purposeful. And everything is carefully planned and so students are writing about what they're reading and. There is a focus, a different type of writing for each module. Um, and so students really, we focus on what we see in the text and how the authors and these texts did it. And then how do we craft that and how do we write about what we've learned? Um, and our students' writing has grown. Uh, so much more than we had seen with empowering writers, which was the previous writing curriculum. And it's very seamless and now they understand better the reciprocal nature of this. Uh, so you can see here, this is actually my daughter's fourth grade, so I have the unique perspective of. Being a teacher doing this and also a parent of a student who was doing this, um, and this is her classroom and they were um. Practiced, they were gathering information for a Socratic seminar, so the speaking and listening piece where they have a conversation around a question. That um they worked together to gather um evidence from the text to support their thinking when they shared. And so I just see amazing materials and the work, there's like a lot of engagement due to the nature of the activities and. Um, so it's not ninety minutes of us standing in front of kids talking, it's. Us introducing something, the kids going off and working in small groups or in partners or independently, coming back together, talking. Uh, there's a lot of really great routine and engaging. Activities that they love and that was one of the other things they really mentioned, we love all the group work, we love talking with one another, gathering information together.
Greg, if you go to the next slide, this is actually from C K L A, so we do have slides in here. Uh, teachers testimonials and um some artifacts from the other program as well because. It was really difficult, it was a difficult decision to make. Um, I think we'll talk later about the results, but um C K L A also had some really fantastic results. Um, the kids were equally enthused, um, because they shared buildings, we had both programs happening and so this buzz about. At the early stages, we're like, which one, can I, can I just jump into someone's classroom, can I steal a manual, like, it was so exciting. But either one of these, um, we really felt like they both had really strong components and and could meet the needs of our students and then one came out stronger. Just wanted to frame that, I'm just as excited about some of the other.
Alright, so I hesitated, there's so much that we want to get through and and I know that, um, and I'm a parent in this age group, so I'm. Observing and what I know from home and sort of one observation and one question. Um. I remember reading years ago about the research they did on uh on language and small, small children, just literally the amount of words. Spoken at home in person and how that impacted. Um, and it feels, you know, that that was a direct impact on future learning, reading, et cetera. Feels like this is coming, like this is sort of a natural outgrowth of that. Um. Some of that research was like live versus screens. Right, so I'm, you know, for me, like, all this seems like very amazing and logical, right? This is how we used to learn or. I learned, right, because like reading was so exciting because you learned all these things. But I don't know as much as you do about the processes you have to do to build the foundations, right? So, um, I guess it's an interesting observation to say like what you're saying, like, they didn't know why. They're reading, but if you can introduce kids to why you would want to read. Right, then every kid would be, I mean, you know that better, so, um, so I don't know where screens fit into this, I know that a lot of our learning. More than I would like for my children happens on screens, and so I'm wondering how this works with the screens. Um, and yeah.
For me personally, there's far less screen time than in previous years, you would say when we were doing reading street. Um, there are some really brief video clips and things, so when we were talking about space, we watched. Um, President Kennedy's part of his speech about why choose the moon, we watched um. Walter Cronkite reports. The the actual time of landing, you heard Anne Marie talk about, they watched the clip of Who's On First. But it's very purposeful, it's very quick and then there is deep discussion around. The screen time, so it's not, it's far less, they do do some word processing with the writing because that is expected of them. Um, but they're not doing as much like independent work on the Chromebook. I will say it has a fantastic digital component, so when we had kids. Out because of COVID or quarantining or whatever, there were video lessons that we could easily assign because this was something that was a concern as well as. What do we send home with students who are missing for significant amount of time? They have video lessons that they created due to the pandemic that kids can uh easily be assigned and and kind of keep up and kids who did that work came back. Without missing a beat or for the most part, and that also helped keep parents in a loop and they were learning along with their students.
I want to say like, even when I was becoming a teacher, you know, twenty years ago, you know, about all of that being like. You're a guide on the side, what was the other one, you know, a sage on the stage, like, you're just going to help them. And this is, no, you are explicitly teaching the content and explicitly teaching them how to write. And explicitly teaching them how to think critically. Yeah, yeah, it really, I think that's the difference, it's it's less about like the thematic unit of just learning about the seasons and. How all those things go on there and we're going to plant seeds and do this, like, no, it's like, we're going to read about this topic. And then we're going to really dive into it, I mean, there are some things like on the jam wars was, I think it's actually on this one, it says. Um. This teacher talked about building a stronger background on topics, the kids are building stronger background knowledge on topics that she hadn't learned until middle high school. Yeah, like, it's it's that. Jean-Claude Jenney had said early, early on, like, oh, they're developmentally not ready for this. That's true, they are. So we were kind of operating under that, not developmentally, but it actually is because you are teaching them, you have to be critical thinkers and leaders. So, and you have to grapple with this kind of content in order to that, yeah, absolutely, but apples are great, but.
So while you've been talking for the benefit of the home audience, I move ahead every now and then. Uh, this was a great slide to highlight, uh, that, if you didn't see that quote, that's a perfect one, kind of summarizes. Really sums up what what they've been talking about and and if it will, there it goes. Um. I think we just have this one, which we've uh talked about the writing component and and then. Uh, there's the Civil War, these. Decade moments.
Absolutely, so. Um, they have a nonfiction text, The Boys' War, and then they have a fiction text.
Didn't keep up.
That's okay. So they are. The content, not to be confused with thematic learning, right, because there's an actual difference. And so the content is actually driving their knowledge at this point, so and that's both in their reading, reading and their writing. And not only is it reading and writing, it's speaking, it's listening, it's fluency, it's comprehension, it's vocabulary. Um, we've been working with morphology and analyzing words in fifth grade and that's been a joy to watch them kind of. Go, oh, wow, look at that, and then go looking for other words that fit that model. And then go looking for other words that fit that model. They have fluency homework that they take home, and I can send this around because one of the students went home and did her fluency homework with her dad. And it's just covered with all these notes about how the week went and how she really did a great job. And these are these books, if you want to throw those around. This is the student workbook, which I absolutely love. Because sometimes you think about a workbook and you're like, oh, like, I went to Catholic school, so I hear workbook. And like, but that's not what their workbooks are at all.
The only problem is there actually isn't enough space to write. The kids have so much that they want to write, and actually, it's like they just need, but the structure themselves are.
Yeah, and then they have, they have journals, right? So they have their journals that they keep while they're working on their unit. And we started the Civil War unit, and just by listening and looking at a few pages in the book, The Boys' War, I was watching students with one, two, three, four, five pages of information and questions. And how did a twelve-year-old sign up for war? How could that possibly happen? What do you mean their parents let them go? It became, you know, it became a thing. And then the war with Russia and Ukraine broke out. And then all of a sudden, they were like, so is this what is happening there? And so they were really, they started watching the news. They were trying to make connections. They're trying to really make it so that they could understand what was going on in the world, right? And this is definitely helping, though. This is the teacher edition, and I'm sure that some of my colleagues might panic a little when they see the teacher edition. But it's just like when we took on our science program. This is great for me. I need it. It's helping me to teach them better. But the online component, like Shannon was saying, has this whole section that they developed for the pandemic. So there's these slides that are already ready-made, good to go. And so if I really need to, I can rely on the slides. And so they're a more condensed version of what I need to do. And then this just helps me fill in the background piece for myself. So then I understand what I'm supposed to be doing with them. They also have assessment stuff online as well. So I have a few of their new read assessments and their samples. And I included the standards for myself so that I know what I'm looking at. And this way I can grade out for them easier when it comes, because we're a standards-based report card. So it helps me when I'm giving them an assessment that I'm still making sure that we're covering our standards. But the standards and the skills are not a checklist with this. Like, I'm not going through and saying, like, Adrienne said, "Oh, yes, I taught the main ideas, so we're good to go." "Oh, I taught inferencing, so we're good to go. Oh, we did vocabulary today. We're good to go." It's literally in every single lesson that I'm doing with them every single day.
While you're taking a look at those. This is, this last slide here was just prior to the decision that we made not too long ago. And I think it's worth just reading out loud. This was the culmination of both pilot program teams meeting for a series of very long meetings to make the decision. And this was one teacher's comment. As a district, we're very fortunate, because no matter which literacy program we go with, our K five children will be immersed in a content-rich, coherent, cumulative, and cross-curricular learning experience. Both of these curriculums inspire curiosity and drive results, empowering all students with rich vocabulary and deep background knowledge. And this was not a paid promotion. It just came from the teacher. Could be. So I'm gonna, hopefully it'll keep up this time, the results. You know, because I can be. So following all of what you've heard, teachers sharing their artifacts, their experience, numerous surveys, lots of knowledge building. Final survey asked a couple key questions about confidence level and asked all of the teachers, no matter which program they had used, what was their confidence level if the other had been selected, right? If yours wasn't selected, how confident are you based on everything you've heard from your colleagues that that's going to be a winner? That's going to be a really good, solid program? And so there was an edge to Witten Wisdom in the confidence level. I have to reiterate that both of them were extremely strong, and I really thought it was going back and forth all year long. So there was an edge on that. And then in straight-out program choice, Witten Wisdom won out over CKLA. So it was an extremely thorough process from two real frontrunners in the state. And we kept getting calls all year long from districts who were sometimes piloting, sometimes just picking between these two programs. So Witten Wisdom, as you probably figured out, was the selection. And now we're going to talk. Advances. I have to keep it off of it, and then it'll pop up. So I'll just leave it at this, and you can talk. In this way, it'll move as fast as you can.
Perfect. Okay. Sorry. Adrienne, did you want to add about the teachers?
Yeah, yeah, definitely.
So ta-da, we. Surprise.
I left the name much better.
So Witten Wisdom was the choice, and the teachers really led the way. It was really their decision, right down to every conversation that we had. We listened to every teacher in the room. They got to share all of their thoughts, just like they are here. And then we did a final survey, which they couldn't have been more thrilled about. That was the final survey. And we came up with Witten Wisdom. And really, the reasons is what we're going to share is why Witten Wisdom had a little bit of the edge for us. And they have really shared very well, so I'm going to move very quickly. And Greg's. The building of background knowledge, absolutely. The integration of skills with the listening, speaking, reading, and writing, absolutely. There's rereading of texts, because that's what good readers and thinkers do. You read, read something to understand it better, to get something else, to understand a different perspective. So all of those things are happening. There are scaffolds in place for students who need it, but you don't use them unless you need it. It's like you have a crutch if you need it. When your leg is healed, you kick it aside. There's a lot of great differentiation within this curriculum. And we were hearing from our specialized teachers, from our L teachers, from our students who needed enrichment. We were hearing all of those things throughout this process that we weren't necessarily hearing with quite the edge of the other program. So that was one of the reasons. The other. Yep. And as you heard already, they have authentic texts rather than the basal readers. So we were getting good literature from authors, putting books in students' hands. All students had the books. That was really important to us. This was another piece of the program that kind of went back and forth. Because in Natalie Wexler's book, we talk a lot about the knowledge and how you have to spend at least three weeks on the knowledge of one particular topic to really gain it. She talks about Velcro balls. So you have Velcro balls, and you know, you keep throwing things at them, hoping they'll stick, right? So when you have one contact, one theme that you're really focusing on, one topic, you're hoping those balls will continue to stick. The thing that we noticed with Witten Wisdom is it spends more time. So when you look at a glance, you'll see this color-coded chart, and you say, oh, they're only learning about four topics. But when you dive deeper, yes, there's one topic, but within outer space, you're learning about Galileo. You're learning about artists, you know, and you can speak to this even more. You're learning about astronauts. You're learning so much more than just outer space. So you're learning so many different perspectives, and you're integrating all of those skills constantly throughout. The other piece is the writing side, which I believe you're on. And they are really great on the writing side of the world, that making sure that all of the genres are being taught throughout the modules throughout the year. And of course, writing is one of our priorities. So this also gave it the edge that we were noticing that Witten Wisdom just did such a thoughtful, careful process with the writing. So that was two. And if you notice with the topics, just to talk about the spiraling effects that it has in third grade, they'll do civil rights. And then in fifth grade, they call it breaking barriers. And you're actually going back to the injustice and segregation. And they're taking a whole different perspective and actually talking about the history of sports and how you can have an influence and break barriers through sports. But they're bringing back some of that same vocabulary and some of those same ideas that we were having problems with in civil, you know, during the Civil War, but also during sports. So it gives the students that spiraling effect of gaining new knowledge to then throw those Velcro balls at, right, and make those connections. So it was really, it's such a thoughtful program. And you continue to see the spiraling, the scaffolds, and the ability to continue critical thinking. So this is just an example of one of the modules and how they talk about the questions. And then in each of the focusing art questions, they start to talk about Galileo or, you know, outer space. And those are just some of the books that you can pass around. But there's great authentic texts that are connected, which is on the next slide. And then each module has the end of the module task, and they're bringing all of that information back together. So the students have the opportunities to collaborate and work independently. The teacher really acts like the facilitator and has a gradual release of responsibility onto the students. So, hey, I've given you all this knowledge. We've talked about it. We've worked with it. Now it's your job to take that evidence and really put it into writing. What have I learned? And Adrienne gave a great, great example this before, when we were chatting about her students today. So go ahead.
The first time I cried today was actually just like, great classroom. I cried earlier when we were talking about, I can read it. And so I was in a second-grade classroom at West Parish with Mrs. Amaro, and she's currently teaching Witten Wisdom. And she said, "Oh, can the student come down and lead for writing to you?" And this is a student who is on AP for reading specifically with language, struggles with expressive and receptive language and writing in particular. And literally making all those connections, putting all those pieces together. And so she had to write from the perspective of Ruby Bridges. And she read it to me, and I was all teary-eyed. And that wasn't even the best part. It was beautifully written, and it followed a sequence. And it had, if the content, it was just a really wonderful piece of writing. And I said, "How did you, like, was this an easy task for you? Was it a hard task from writing from someone else's perspective, you know?" And she said, "Well, it was, it was easy." And I thought it was going to be some kind of. Yeah, well, Mrs. Amaro gave me the sentence starters or something along the lines. And she said, "Well, it's easy because I already learned so much about Ruby Bridges, so I could write about her." And like, for me, I was like, oh. And so Mrs. Amaro and I are sitting at her teaching in tears. It was just so powerful just to see that connection. I was like, I want to go back in the classroom now and start teaching again. Because like, this is what I think we really been waiting for, and we're really starting to see it all come together. So it's, it's really a nice, a nice shift.
I've gotten four or five pictures, probably weekly, from my teachers' texts saying, "They are all engaged." Look at them, all engaged, every single one of them. So they are enthusiastic as well.
Those books are really interesting.
Right?
Give a third reader a book called Shark Attack, and you've got them up for Giant Squid. They really carefully picked books that would engage students. And there's artwork that we look at, and that really is fantastic and it ties right in. And again, it's all purposeful, and it all lends itself to the content and is well-connected. So for students who might not have the opportunities to visit museums and get to talk about, I mean, we're talking about composition of art and lines and color. And so it is a really new way of engaging students.
So we really talked about this a lot, but the philosophical shift, we really have talked about. But now it's about putting it into practice. So we're really going to dive into that with the rollout and how we're going to make the next colliers happen. And Adrienne's going to take it from here.
So we have, how many? Fifteen, fifteen of our nineteen piloters have signed up to be literacy leaders. So over the course of next year, they will be helping other, we'll talk about early adopters through this process as well within our schools. So not just as coaches, we have their support, and they're in it every day. So they're going to be so important, their colleagues. That's really the best we could hope for. So we do have, so in September, actually, this June or August, anyone that wasn't teaching Witten Wisdom, so the other pilot teachers that were teaching CKLA will be trained in Witten Wisdom, and they will all start Witten Wisdom in September. Any of the teachers that are currently teaching Witten Wisdom, excellent, they get a whole year two. They'll be in year two of it. And then we had to think of a way, everyone wants to jump on board, and it's very exciting. But we really want to be extremely purposeful in this process, because there is so much that needs to go in to build the philosophical shift, learn the content itself. The logistical shift of how your classroom is run is very different. So we didn't want to just jump in everyone in September of this year. So we're going to do, we tried to figure out a rationale, put a rationale in place to have some early adopters. So early adopters will be leveling out at grade levels. So an example of this would be at West Parish. In second grade, we had Tom and Mary teaching Witten Wisdom. In fourth grade, we had two fourth grade teachers teaching Witten Wisdom. So in the fall, their entire grade-level team will teach Witten Wisdom. So they have each other to work with. And we have a lot of other teachers at other grade levels that wanted to jump in. We couldn't just say yes to everyone, so we had to have a rationale. So that leveling out rationale will happen at all schools, leveling out at certain grade levels in order to have real support systems at each school. And then any new hires, anyone that is hired from now until September will also be starting Witten Wisdom, because it doesn't make sense to do a year of Reading Street. And any new positional changes. So a fifth-grade teacher is going down to third grade. Instead of learning third-grade Reading Street, they'll be learning third-grade Witten Wisdom. Everyone else will stay in the course with Reading Street for next year.
I just wanted to emphasize that.
Yes, please.
That's one nice encounter in student.
Yes. I know, it was hard, too.
So you gotta bear with us. I've thought about this really carefully. You get one chance to have a good implementation. And we have the expertise from the piloters and the advanced team that did the work this year. They are going to be laying the groundwork for the teachers. And Bill, you asked about parent readiness and communication. And we've talked about that being another thing, that we will take our literacy leader team, that's comprised of people who've had all this experience, to build the pieces that we want to have in place for a successful full launch. And that means anticipating some of the sensitive topics that will be coming up and preparing the teachers to have those and preparing the information that will be helpful for parents to have. We don't want to throw this out there for every teacher and have them, first of all, really changing how they teach. And you have to realize this is a monumental shift in how they do what they do. So learning the content, understanding the different approaches, you know, learning from those who have gone before is very important for us to do over the next twelve months or so. And then this time next year, that's when we will do the full-on launch, everybody, everybody. But we'll have a substantial number of teachers will be starting next year. And then roughly the other half or so will join on. But the first group will be really putting all those foundational pieces. There's a lot of professional development. There's PLC time. And if we rush it, we run the risk of, you know, overwhelming teachers, but also having a really, you know, uneven implementation at schools. And then one of the things that happens in that, we also have to catch up with how, we may have to redesign schedules at this course. And so if you do that in all grades, all at once with everybody new, you, you are going to have problems. And one of the things that happens is habits developed during that first year are really essential for how you then continue to teach even after you've, you've mastered some of the things. So we would like to lay down the modeling, the information and all the learning to go in with good practice and with understanding and with good preparation. And that's why we have a phased, phased.
And a lot of teachers are very excited.
I, I just probably am.
Same to say the same thing.
Um, but many, as you can see, are very enthusiastic, we're eager to do the pilot. But there are some very comfortable with what they've been doing. So we want to make sure that we give them the time and we give them the professional development and we explain the hows and whys, um, rather than just pushing it onto them. Because you remember the pilot team was all very willing, eager participants. So we want everybody, we want this enthusiasm to grow in our schools so that they all want to come in and join, you know, this. So it is, it's more than it seems. And yes, I mean, all of us were like, okay, could we start it next year? But there's so much that goes in. And I heard a term the other day that has stuck with me is learn the rules like a pro so you can break them like an artist. You want to learn it really, really well before we decide what we, because realistically, there's so much in this program. We can't do everything to fidelity. So we have to really be careful in this process, critically think about what can we let go of so that we can fit in as much of this as we possibly can. Because again, we don't want that pendulum to swing so far the other way that suddenly the teachers are standing up and talking and trying to fit in everything in this program and forgetting about all the other good practices that we already have in place. So it's a careful balance.
And part of our literacy leaders, I'm sure these two sign to be literacy leaders. I don't want to assume. But, um, part of their process is like next year, their doors are open. Like some of them are willing to have teachers come in and actually watch it in action and say, yes, I was nervous. I was nervous up until December. But you have to hold on and like really hear firsthand from that. Um, and I think as a, as a teacher, for those that might be a little bit reluctant about that change and about this huge shift, seeing it in action is so powerful, right? There's only so many like videos we can watch and hear from, but their colleague next door, I'm going to go in there and see what she's doing every day and hear from her students. It, it, the buy-in is, is, it's critical for this to work well. And, um, I don't have that doubt, I, there's no doubt in my mind that once they see that, um, yeah, those that might be reluctant on this, yeah. And I think the other piece of that as well, between now and then, you said it yourselves, along the way, these fearless leaders were modifying things to meet the needs of their learners, deciding what they had to do. Oh, they like that book, but they needed it to use more space. The literacy leaders are also going to be working on, oh, here's your binder of all of these assessments to do. And here it is all printed out for you, so you don't even have to go online and look for it, like literally. But we've already done so much of the vetting for you so that you don't have to be bogged down by that piece. And you can focus on the content and the delivery and the excitement of the program. So like, that's why it's this, this, the rollout is so integral to the whole process. Slow roll, I should say.
Any questions? So I heard, um, Greg Fox say, you know, there's sensitive topics coming up, things like that. So I'm curious to know if there's been any parent feedback as to the content of what is being taught.
There has not.
Nothing?
No, and, um, only positive, actually. Diana actually got to Thunder Rolling in the Mountains and she didn't get any feedback either, right?
Right, so one of my teachers prior to teaching it, um, was very concerned about one of the books. And it was because of Death and Dying and Art of History.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, it happened often, um, still happening today and.
That's the book we just saw?
No, no. It's in the same realm.
Yeah.
Um, and she was very hesitant and was considering doing an alternative book. And then she said, if I try to do the alternative book, I'm just going to end up creating this curriculum on my own, this is silly, I'm going to just stick with it and see what happens. And she had empathy and understanding and, you know, great questions and conversations. And the kids would be the ones leading the conversations at home. So when your child's leading conversations at home, there's nothing really to worry about because they're just asking really great thoughtful questions with concern. And, you know, or with, hey, this was really amazing that I learned about this. I can't believe this happened and it would never happen now, you know, or we wouldn't allow it to happen or whatever. The conversation took them, but it, the kids are taking the information home in a kid-friendly way. And it's not a complaint, not a single one that I can.
Yeah, I think the teachers experience more of the anxiety beforehand because we're not used to that. We're not used to like, yes, in our adult lives, we view it about it and we see it on the news. And there's only so much of this work to expose our children to. But they're already exposed to so much, especially with social media. And they're exposed to things just being thrown out their faces all the time. This will teach them to think critically about all of those sources. Like we're teaching them to like, don't just take it at face value. Ask the questions about that video you just saw on TikTok or that video that you're seeing on, you know, ask questions about it. Um, and that's, I think, the real, you know, beauty of, of this that can really kind of, uh, really help them become really thinkers, not just in the classroom, but extended in, into, you know, society. It's really what we're, we're trying to do as teachers, help them to become citizens, right? So.
One, one thing to add to that is that, uh, and I think it's important to remember that point about our teachers were concerned about a lot of things. And it did not pan out for the students. The students, keep in mind that the students will rise to the occasion almost every single time when we think they might not be able to. And they do it and they do it over and over again. And we need to have that faith in our teachers for guiding them and for our students being able to reach and handle, uh, things in a, in a mature and thoughtful way. And they do. And, um, I, I would also just point out that there are lots and lots of studies that unless a, a child is living in some kind of little protective bubble cocoon somewhere, they are exposed indiscriminately to thousands and thousands of acts of violence by third grade simply by being exposed to television and, and other forms of media.
Yeah.
That happens and we have no control over. So to have that, you know, the same concept, but done in a thoughtful, uh, thought-provoking, uh, you know, the critically, critical thinking way is that's the way I would like my child to experience, uh, uh, the reality of loss. Not through, you know, watching a movie or a show and never being able to talk about it. So this is why this, this night is extremely important. One, to understand the process, but two, in case, and I, I promise you, if you Google any sensitive topic or any curriculum, somewhere in this country, you're going to find outrage about something because we live in a time of outrage. And I want you to keep in mind that the people who are working with this and who we trust and who are working with the students are not experiencing that. It is, it, it's not, nothing is, that is, is in this content is outrageous or, or, you know, uh, it, it's just not, it's appropriate. And they handle it in a really skillful way, in a way that's a, a learning experience. So, uh, if somebody does pop up next year who has not read it yet or who has not listened to their child, that just is going to go with the headline, it's really important for the school committee to understand the, the care and the thought and the selection behind that knee-jerk reaction to something. And if we need to come back next year and share similar previews of things. But I think that one of the takeaways is let's not anticipate, you know, uh, horrible things and horrible reactions happening. Let's actually do the work and experience it and learn from that. And that's what part of this year was about and that's what next year will be about as well too. Uh, but we're not seeing that and we need to both firm in our convictions that this is appropriate, it's developmentally appropriate and it's the right thing to do and we're going to do.
Yeah, uh, just a couple of quick comments. One, knowledge gap, most important book I've read in 10 years, hands down. Unbelievable book. The work, this, this, this work is so important to, not only to me, but to students, obviously, that I, I just can't emphasize enough how impressed I am with, uh, the fact that it's, that it, that it's beginning to take roots. And the proof's going to be in the pudding five years down the line when we look at O'Malley and say, boy, you know, that transferred from the elementary schools into O'Malley, no question about it. Um, I do think, and I don't, I'm not a big believer in silver bullets, like this isn't the silver bullet. I think that, um, it's great to see teachers excited about teaching this type of stuff and that, that really excites me. But I'm also a little bit concerned about, uh, two things. One that was addressed at the very end, which I wrote down is who's coaching the coaches? You know, it's, it's a, it's an old adage of, you know, who's training the trainers or who's coaching the coaches then? Does that get kind of messed up in the process? And it sounds like, I, I think taking it relatively, relatively piecemeal is probably a good idea. Um, and the other thing is that I, I think it's really important that parents buy in and that we allow that portal to be open to them to see that. And I say that because I think one of the committees along is talking about absenteeism and, uh, the importance of that and how that kind of ties in. I mean, if kids are excited about learning, they're going to want to be in school. And, uh, so that type of thing. Um, the only thing that really concerns me is, uh, what about the kids that, that have, you know, that are getting extended services? And are they falling behind? You know, it, it, what is that, what does that kind of play out to, to look like?
So that's one of the shifts for sure is, um, the classroom setup will definitely change. And I think that we're working on that. Um, but you can speak from your personal experiences this year.
So we've had to rethink our, our special education service delivery time just because prior to this, when we were doing reading street, we were doing more of a center-based where students would rotate through different activities. And so they very easily could rotate out to receive special education services. Where this is much more whole group, it's a little bit harder. So that is one of the considerations and something that Greg mentioned in terms of scheduling is we're really, we've played around a lot with what is the best time within that block for students to receive those services so that they're not missing any part of the valuable learning within the class? And how do they then come back and catch up with what they've missed? Um, and that's something that I think we'll continue to work on next year in that we're having those conversations that are building. We've talked about having win time, which stands for what I need. So there would be a block of time every day where students would specifically get those targeted services or interventions, um, that would be identified in things like the DIBLs testing and some of our other assessments. Um, and then something that it was on the slides, but I don't think we specifically stated is that K to three will be doing foundations, um, phonics instruction. So that's meant to be coupled with Whitman Wisdom. And K to two has leveled readers as part of that as well, um, that are decodable. I'm sorry, they're not levels, they're decodable. So they go along with the content, but are easy for students to decode. Um, so that would also be a careful consideration at that time. But it is, that is one of the, the bigger fish we still have to try and figure out. How do we best schedule those times? They're still getting it, it's just how do we, how do we fit it into our day?
But I think one of the key pieces is what you just talked about. They're still going to be receiving the same text, even in those controlled texts. And with one group of students you can really focus on, still the decoding piece of, you know, what does this word say? Where the other students will be focusing on deeper content. So you have the best of both with that same book. Um, and that was a missing piece with our skills instruction in the past. We didn't have enough text to necessarily connect with the skills instruction as well as teaching them something new.
I appreciate all, all the stuff you talked about tonight, so important. Like to look back at myself and if I made a student of myself. Thanks.
So, so these books, the literature, the texts, um, fiction, nonfiction, um, is this, is this deter, how, how are these selections made? I mean, is that part of the curriculum?
It's part of the curriculum.
So they're predetermined through the, um.
Great minds is the.
Yeah.
Okay, and, um, you know, some of these subjects matters are, are difficult, difficult conversations. I, I know like Little Red Riding Hood is, is a, also like, like, you know, grim book. Three little pigs, but, um, you know, I mean, it's sort of like, you know, the same kind of scenario. Where you teach kids young about like, you know, horrible things that can happen and, and, but, um, I don't know, you mentioned, you mentioned something about one student having, um, an uncomfortable situation. Uh, you know, Greg said that there hasn't been any problems, no, no problems with the teachers, I mean, not teachers, sorry.
With parents?
Yeah, parents. But, um, I'd like to know more about like how that, I mean, there are difficult topics, right? And, and maybe some things are, you know, best left to, to parents to discuss. So where, like, see.
She brought it up a few times already. She's a very strong-willed young lady and I just had a parent conference with her mom yesterday. It's one of the things that I love most about her. Um, but what happened was she got ahold of the Boys' War and started looking through it. And then she started taking notes and she's one of the students that ended up with four pages of notes. And then she quickly realized that both the North and the South actually had some decent reasons for going to war. And it wasn't necessarily because the South wanted to have slaves. It's because they kind of needed to have slaves in order to live the lives that they were living. Um, and the North had it in a different way. So, so she kind of started to feel that out for herself and started to really understand like why it wasn't necessarily that we were painting white people as bad people. That, you know, that there was an awful lot going on.
Yeah, there, there, there are some people who are bad that happen to be white, but, you know. Um, so that was fifth grade or?
Yes.
I was assuming?
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, my other question was about, um, so you're saying there's going to be a staggered approach next, next year? So second grade in West Parish and fourth grade in West Parish?
Yes.
And so like, so those second graders that had that curriculum were going into third grade and will have the other curriculum, so.
So some of them, yeah. And we looked at it as like, they're already out of the game and that they learned all of this knowledge to this other program as well. Yes, it doesn't follow the same vertical trajectory as being in the one program. Um, but it wasn't a loss for those students at all. I mean, those teachers from CK, I will say the same, like only honest, they learned so much within that program. Yes, a little different, different topics, um, and maybe not even quite as in-depth, um, through CKLA. Um, but still have gained knowledge.
Yeah, so you don't perceive a problem with that for students that are left and like go back and forth and back again.
No, I don't, I don't.
No, because of foundational skills, we're only really talking about this piece of the program. But some of it is a continuation with the foundational skills that would be a complete vertical.
So there's some overlap.
Yeah, there's some overlap.
And, and listen, I, I, I am a patient person, um, and that's tempered with the, you know, concern of doing this poorly. We, many, many folks have done this very poorly. And the cost to that, um, on students and teachers is just something that I, that we can't avoid. Yeah, this is what, what, what you touched on some, but, and especially towards the end. For as enthusiastic as you guys are, and I share that enthusiasm, there wasn't too much enthusiasm in September after November. There was, and these are, you know, these are talented, skilled, better teachers, okay? And they were really struggling with how do I teach this way? It's a big, big lift, I can't say that enough. And, and we can't underestimate that. Um, we need to respect that, acknowledge it and then prepare as, as we are doing it to support, um, our teachers and then allow and also provide the opportunity for them to support each other. That's the most powerful support. And if we rush through it, that can't happen. And if you can't put in a place, whether it's a parent communication or the, or the resource or the binder talking. Without taking the time to have our, our leaders, leaders, our coaches, support from district do that well, it will not go well. And the cost there is, is too deep.
I can see the scenario where like this is more like the pyramid, you know, they're kind of figuring things out and fine tuning so that it isn't everybody getting the, learning the pinks at the same time. They can streamline and, and kind of, um, to focus on what's important to the next person to learn so that they're not making the same mistakes or dealing the same.
Really, I think, I think that's really part personally.
That's our goal, I mean, that's our.
That's our goal, I mean, that's our.
And pacing seems like a little thing, it's such a big thing, it can be the success or the death of a program, right? So trying to work out some of those kinks before it's a full rollout is really critical too. And again, it's about making sure we don't lose all of the other great stuff. So it's that delicate balance of im- implementing something new, but keeping all the greatness that we already have. And if we jump in too quickly, you know, teachers being teachers wanting to do it all well, something ends up, in the, in the mess, so we want to be sure we're careful in that process.
We want them to feel as effective as possible as teachers, right, and so the feeling of ineffectiveness is, is no greater than, getting handed something and saying, teach this, and without having the time to learn.
Had to prolong your very long day already, um, but, um, what was I gonna say? I forget what I was gonna say, but, but you had said something that kind of, piqued me with, with some experience we've had, where we just, you gotta do it the right way, otherwise, everything you do from then on is just not, it, it's kind of productive, what you do.
Absolutely. Can I add to that too? Um, so this is exciting to us to hear, that there's excitement in the classroom, right, that this is what we do, this is why we're sitting here. I, I really hope, and I'm, I know it will happen, that the lines of communication stay open, so that, if you find any needs, that can be brought to the school committee to help facilitate this going forward, because it seems like we're on really good path. And it, I don't want to feel like there's boundaries other than what we're doing, you know? Just to keep it going throughout the rest of the grades, this is exciting.
Thank you, we appreciate, we appreciate, yes.
So now, what we can do, I mean, we, we're here, we, we do budget, we do policy, and, programming, and things like that, or whatever we can do to help facilitate.
Well, one of the things that school committee has done is by building the infrastructure of support. You have, you have math and literacy coaches that we didn't have ten years ago.
Best thing to ever do.
And that's a budgetary, huge piece of support, that is, that is, paying dividends every single day. Um, so, you know, we find ourselves with actually an incredible infrastructure compared to most districts. Um, which is why we hear people making selections in two weeks, or, or somebody else telling them what they're going to do. And I guarantee you that those districts, now like, some of them, it will be a single person or two picks something like Whitton Wisdom, and they'll start in September, the entire district, and they'll be going, oh my gosh, what happens, but you have supported and funded a really thoughtful, rosy in that kind of support in these practices, so that's why we find ourselves able.
I had a teacher share today, I have not been this excited to teach in twenty years.
So, it'd be hardest year to teach in twenty years.
And exactly, I was going to say, so add that to the year it's been, right? So we're doing something right.
So. It is nine thirty-five.
I appreciate you giving us all of this time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
These are our most exciting parts of our day.
Next year. The leveling out, yeah, it's the, uh, I don't know. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think you guys think clearly, it's interesting.
Do they call the flu of?
I don't know, okay, alright.
Yes.
Co-um, so, uh, after uptick, a little bit of an uptick rather, um, in March, uh, wastewater concentration going down again, which I always like. Um, at the same time that we have had an uptick, so you see this sort of roller coaster here we're having in terms of, uh, identified cases, uh, back to thirty-five, spread across the district quite well, higher concentration at Gloucester O'Malley, but, but quite low at, at our elementary's. Um, I just, I don't know, I, I, I'm not committing, okay, I'm just, um, I think we're gonna see these ups and downs, you know, I don't know, I mean, I, not that I'm a health professional, but that's probably, probably likely. But we'll continue to track everything, and as we're doing this, and what we do know of these thirty-five cases, and talking to Parker today, and working with, with the school nurses and principals, is that we don't see any patterns within the schools here. Nothing identified connecting these cases, we had that a couple times, as, as we talked about, but that's, that's not happening. So there's some increase here, but, but, um, not, and then here, I, as I always show you, um, you know, the ups and downs you had across the year, uh, third of cases is kind of, well, just really a month ago. In, in March, we were at a similar level, um, and then that, that goes back then to, um, sort of November, November, um, uh, so, um, these are some, uh, data on, um, on the, um, testing, so, uh, you, you saw the first three groups here, three twenty-eight, four-four, four-eleven, uh, because you went vacation last week, and then you see a thousand and nine folks who tested in pool, in pool, testing this week, one thousand seven hundred forty-three tests were distributed, I'm sorry, we just don't have the results on, the complete results on the pools for this week. Um, but positives to the at-home testing are nine. Um, the weekly totals of individuals for this week, okay, are, um, uh, at-home testing, you see, I'm just, just broken up by, it's the same numbers above in terms of who tested, how many people tested this week, but just broken up by staff and students, so you see, you know, four hundred thirty-three staff, uh, participated in the at-home testing this week, thirteen hundred and ten students, uh, for a total of seventy hundred, seventy hundred forty-three, and then in terms of pool testing, two hundred and twenty-two staff members, seven hundred eighty-seven students, total of a thousand and nine, meaning we administered twenty-seven hundred fifty tests this week. Um, following up on the request from Laura, here's unique individuals in terms of, um, who are, uh, doing the test, who are registered for testing. It varies week to week whether folks participate, okay? So in terms of, um, unique staff, five hundred seventy total staff are involved in testing in one way or another. Two hundred seventy-one, uh, unique students are involved in testing one way or another, you see how it's broken down, at-home only, one thousand three, um, people that are just doing it at home, they're not doing pooled. The pool testing or weekly testing, seven hundred twenty-two are only doing that, not the other, and then nine hundred twenty-four are registered both. So the total of twenty-six forty-nine registrations, um, are you, I guess that's two hundred, twenty-six forty-nine unique registrations. Uh, broken out as you can see, can pause there, see if there are any questions?
Just a,
Yeah.
Just a happy question, um, why the, you know, it looked like there was quite a substantial rise in the pool testing number of students?
Uh, we, we, we don't know, honestly, I mean, be- because, you know, part of this is, especially at, um, uh, high school, is, you know, testers go to the room, they call all the students who are registered in that room in their classroom, and, and then the students literally choose whether to come out or not.
I see, so maybe after vacation.
Especially at the high school.
Maybe after vacation, more people wanted to test.
It could be, yeah, yeah, could be also absences, absences are lower, absences are lower, yeah, so, um, but that, that's, that's the variation we see in a pool testing, part of the variation, I should say, is just that, um, students can choose to opt out that week.
Can the younger students also opt out?
It's not about, um, it's more about that older students have more agency.
Well, that's what I,
That's what it is.
That's what I mean, yeah.
Younger students, you say you call it A, they, they come out.
Right.
That's just, that's the way, that's how, how humans work.
Right. Thank you.
Oh, sorry. This one?
Unique, yeah, okay, yeah, okay.
Got it, care. Uh, moving on, so, moving on, so my goal and evaluation process, um, I shared with everyone tonight, but also especially as new members, the goals that the school, school committee and I agreed upon for this school year. This is the summary of those goals, just to point them out to you. The real update here is the evaluation process timeline, um, very similar to last year's in terms of timing. Um, the week of May ninth, I'll get you, uh, uh, evidence really, um, the documentation, um, supporting the progress that, uh, that, um, I made on my goals, that'll be in a, um, Google Drive folder, and be organized by the, the, the five goals, five goal areas. Um, folks, you'll have time, uh, in, in May to review all of that evidence, and then, and evaluation, we're gonna share with you. Um, probably we'll go over that, but maybe, maybe Kathy will talk about how to help the members just understand what that, how to, how to, how to use that potentially, it's pretty self-explanatory, but, um, definitely heard from, uh, Laura and Sam last year that there's no flying blind, and so, I'd like to support you both on that. Um, school committee submits their, your individual evaluations to the chair, um, by May twenty-fifth. We'll check in at the May twentieth school meeting, school meeting, to see if you have any, just any updates or discussions about the pro- progress, um, or the process, I should say, the process, um, but how to do it. Um, uh, by June third, the chair completes a written report, which should be to the school committee, that's sort of like a combination report. And then, um, June eighth will do, will review that public.
So, I'm just thinking about this process and how we change the date and everything, um, because it used to be we did the superintendent's evaluation in December.
Yes.
So there was a full year. We have new members that have never done this before, have been on the committee for five months. So I'm wondering if we want to have any kind of discussion or, or waiver of some sort, that if the new members that have been here for five months don't feel comfortable that they've observed enough to complete, uh, evaluation, that they wouldn't be expected to. I mean, there's some communities, when they have this date, they waive the new members' first year, for participating in the evaluation, if, if they want to, not that they have to, but just, just, when you see the evaluation and it, if it calls for information that you may not feel you can accurately respond to, I wouldn't want to, potentially cause, um, any concern.
Yeah.
Because there's not, that haven't had that full-term ability to evaluate, that, I'm just putting that out there, because I know other school committees discuss this as well.
Especially talking about me and Bill, I guess.
Well, you're the two new members, I mean, it could be any new members, like you said, you heard from Sam and Laura last year.
Yeah, I've never seen the evaluation, I'd be willing to look at it, if there's certain, uh, sections that I don't feel confident filling out, can I just waive those?
You probably should do all of them.
All of them, yeah, and when you see it's not, it's not like any evaluation you've done before. So it's not as simple as just writing great things based on, like, you know, you know, the first five months.
But that's okay with me, though.
I know. But it, but it could work against you too, and that's why I was saying, most, a lot of school committees, a lot of school committees will have them, unless you participated in one full year, of, of working with the superintendent, then you don't necessarily participate in the evaluation, so I just want to put that on the table, just in case it's a concern to anybody. Just leaving it at that.
And you also look at the Massachusetts Association of School Committee website, um, because I do know that they put out a lot of information on important topics, and this is definitely something at the conference, they usually have a session on this for, for members, because, um,
We're both registered, yeah, on the same day.
Over charting the board?
Yeah.
Over charting the course, but that was, you know, this is what we have to handle.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
This is, the website will give you more information than this small, yeah. So I, I think that's a valid point, so if you get into, once you see what it's all about, in terms of concern that you're,
Yeah.
not as informed or, um,
Yeah.
expressed.
So, uh, what would our options be, like, say, okay, can we see the evaluation, decide whether we feel confident filling it out? Or should we just?
Well, the evaluation, yeah, you can, yeah, you can see the evaluation form, like, sure.
One, one, one way, because this is, you know, on May twenty-fifth, and then by, now, then, obviously, you'll not only see the evidence, but you'll also see the form and, and the proper, the rubric, you can decide then, I mean, you're creative, you can decide that, that's all.
Yeah. I just wanted to put it out there, uh, especially what Kathy said, it's a all or nothing type thing, I wouldn't want to see, try to figure, a part of it and not the other, because that won't work for the, 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 um, compiled composite at the end, but, um, just, I mean, there's no requirement that each member has to do it, but I just wanted members, if they felt overwhelmed or uncomfortable, to know that it's okay, I guess that's what I'm trying to say.
Right, because there's criteria, like, or there's some categories of efficient, exemplary, you know, needs improvement or whatever the categories are. So you might have enough information, maybe a comment on certain points, but you may feel uncomfortable putting a box in that particular.
And, but, yeah, the superintendent's extremely active, so you know him, it's, I know it's only been five months, but I think you have a pretty good idea who he is, where some superintendents aren't so engaged, um, but I just wanted to throw that out there.
Got no immediate complaints for the record?
Appreciate that. Um, alright, so, uh, this, anyway, there's, you have that also, I gave you a printout copy, so you can refer. Um, and then the last piece is upcoming school, upcoming school meetings, and, uh, sharing this with you for a reason, let me get, no, four gate right now. Um, like, often our meetings are full, but, for example, in the year, they get quite full, because we're trying to do regular work, and then also trying to wrap up a number of things, school improvement plans being, you know, primary one, by the way, I wish it being another one. Um, so these are pretty full, um, uh, dates, so, uh, meetings, okay? Um, uh, and then the, uh, some committee, some committee meetings as well. Um, just want to make sure folks are aware of that.
I will also, um, let you know that I have touched base with everyone, and if it's, um, you've, expressed an interest of having our meeting speaking earlier. Um, and as our presentation tonight was extremely informative and exciting and everything, we want to make sure we're doing things well, we're, of you and us, you know, we don't want to be going too late tonight, or, all of our support, but, you know, we have other people here at the meeting. Um, so people are okay through the end of the school year to, I think, six, if that is agreeable to.
I think, I think the idea that it could be a forty-nine right now, it's a nine forty-nine? Uh, that'd be, actually, it's a big help to, I think, our staff, um, you know, staff, or, or guests at the meeting, or, or presenters at the meeting, or should say, um, partners, and sort of thing. And I think, I think that's a reasonable approach. And then if we need the exact intention, it also, it would start at six, so it wouldn't start early, I appreciate that, I think it's a big help to folks. So that, and then this is just, um, just upcoming progress, upcoming, um, upcoming, um, some committee, uh, agendas where we have, or topics, or something. Next order of business is to, uh, give a summary of the presentation that was provided, uh, on the building, so I'll do that now.
Yes, and I just want to, like, yeah, and we want, I mean, the presentation is in our packet. It's on Zoom, so it's in the last month, uh, last meeting's pre, um, recording. Probably began around, uh, forty-five minute mark, remember, during the meeting? Um, there were no, just, there was no real discussion about the project, just questions that kind of clarified, so it really was, a report on the project, not a decision, there were no decisions made and no votes made. Um, and I did check with, um, our attorney, who then checked with the attorney general, on how to kind of cure the fact that we had an administrative error on our agenda, and we have complied and satisfied from the attorney general's perspective, um, so.
Great, so I'll get, I'll go through this pretty quickly, as, as you said.
Okay, you don't have to hit every slide.
What's that?
You don't have to hit every slide.
No, I won't, I, I, I might flip through every slide, but I won't talk.
Okay.
So, uh, just a few things here, um, and also the presentation, um, the slides have been up, uh, since that day, they're on the building, uh, building product website, very easy to find. Um, one of the most important things I talked about was schedule, no, actually, uh, shoot. I'm gonna cut to, so I'm gonna cut to the summary here. Um, the most important piece, uh, is, is the big picture here, that the product is on schedule, product continues to remain on budget, uh, and within the, the assigned budget of six-six point seven million dollars, um, progress is continuing, steelwork continues, I'll show you a little bit about. Progress is continuing, steel work continues. I'll show you a little about, about those pieces. And dealing, and it's, and the that all goes according to plan despite the significant industry issues. When present price increases, material availability, lead times. The project team, we'll talk about in a moment, is doing a tremendous job of coordinating all of that. And, and in order for us to, the project to remain on schedule. I, I can't, it's hard to, for me, I'm not doing a great job communicating the challenge that they're facing. You'll know to some degree what the, you know, she's experiencing, but it's a remarkable task. Just go to a few other things here. In terms of the, I want to talk about the project team here. This is probably the best presentation you've seen through the whole project of what the different roles are of the project team. So the owner's product manager, they're hired and work for us and they're really I mean, project managing, they're dealing with the, with the meetings, they're doing all the interfacing with MSBA, putting together all the materials and some metals to MSBA. They are really overseeing, work with the other project team members overseeing the budget, budget payment, review, approvals. And they organize the building committee so we can make decisions in order to keep the process going. Architect and designer, for many, for, you know, most folks, that is pretty clear what their role is, but particularly now putting all the pieces in place. So we're getting materials on time and ordering on time and working with the contractor and all, and all the suppliers as well as the subcontractors. Construction manager, the folks who are building the building. That's W T Rich, sorry, the owner and product manager is C B R Hery, C B R E Hery. Architect and designer is Dore Whitty, Dore Whitty, your construction manager, W S W T Rich. They are working, you know, through all, they've worked with all the bidding, they've worked with all, they've worked, we've worked with all subcontractor procurement, all the construction coordination, coordination and essentially building the building. All of that, plus our team equals some really great product outcomes so far. I want to go, I want to go to timeline here for a little bit. Just so people see what's happening, where we are. So site work began in August, foundations were poured and installed in November, December and January. They managed weather quite well. Their steel has been putting up, but I think probably just about complete right now. If you go by the building, you see that both the A and B building or the A and B sections of the school are pretty much complete. They've been pouring the concrete slabs that are on each level. They've done, I think, two extended days of those. They have at least two floors of that completed. And then soon we started to see them doing the framing and doing, and the roofing and the work to close the building and make it weatherproof. And then at that point, they can get involved in the interior work. So that's the sort of schedule. Let me just go to, yeah, I'll talk about a picture in a moment. A lot of community outreach that the project team, the project team is doing, particularly C B R E Hery. With the product updates that are on the website every week, email with ever, if there are any changes to things or noteworthy things happening on site. Large deliveries, the late night, the later day concrete pours, that's updated on the website, but also email notification, flyer notification, neighborhood. Dennis Fassidi is the onsite owner representative and is always there available and, you know, has kind of information on the, on the website. So if there are neighbors or folks in the neighborhood who have questions or concerns, they can reach, preach him and he's been very responsive and very helpful to a number of our, of our neighbors. This is just a sort of reporting on some of the very significant increases in terms of costs. While we were meeting last week, the project team was doing a great job of explaining how comp, how awful, ridiculous the, the, the cost increases are. And then we had to have, have them remind folks that even despite these, we're managing the budget in a way where it not only is on budget, but because of the way they've been doing the bidding and how these, our prices, our contractors locked in, that despite these increases in cost, that doesn't mean that we face additional cost increases. The, essentially the, the guarantee maximum price is already built in to all the bids. And so we're on the only reason, the reasons we would go over cost, that at this point would not, would not be because of conditions in, in the field, your cost increases could be whether we were making decisions to make change orders. That sort of stuff. That's something we obviously can control, will control. Just, and then the most important piece I want folks to show is just the design update. So just quickly, folks, remember this is the building. The A, what we call the A building is, is the academic wing. Six classrooms per floor, three floors. What we call the B building are the larger space cafeteria, gymnasium, gymnasium and administrative offices. And also the back of the house, which is, you know, all the operational and, you know, facility, facilities. You have the large playground in the back for one through, grace, with your five, the small playground for cane one in the, in the front. You have the bus loop here and then the parking and also the arrival and dismissal loop here as well. So A, B, and then just give you an update, whatever, already said that. These are some of the designs we're seeing on the playground and we're working with the interior, sub-interior group last week to really refine the playgrounds. Just more photos from here, or not photos, but drawings. There have been some adjustments in interior work because of, not only down engineering, but also change in materials, those are ongoing. And will continue to happen, some adjustments, ensure a little, some of the looks. Colors have been, have been discontinued. So we have to make some adjustments with colors, but that's all work in progress. I want to get to just the updates of the structure. Probably pictures of the steel or anything, but I guess we don't, sorry about that. The last piece is just in terms of, of timing. So this is, you know, what we see in the next immediate is pouring the concrete slabs, I mentioned install roofing, build exterior facade. And then at that point, it's weatherproof in May and June, and we start working on the interior, our framing and get to the interior. Quick summary of, of the presentation last week. I thought it was very helpful to have a full team here for the first time in a while. They gave us a lot of great information, which is obviously, you know, on recording and folks can watch that because they did a better job than I do right now.
We will move on to subcommittee reports and there was one subcommittee meeting of the building and finance subcommittee on April fourteenth.
It's gonna be very quick. This is all on Zoom. You just check in the packet right now. We just did one motion. So we met on April fourteenth and there was a couple of topics of discussion. One was the community eligibility program, which is our food service program. The school district has to make a decision about June first, I believe it is. Gary, correct me if I'm wrong, Javi, I'm wrong. On this, whether we're gonna participate in this program. We talked about which schools currently right now would be eligible for as far as low income, and I think it's the forty percent threshold that each school would have to make. And I believe most of our schools make that threshold with the exception of Plumco and West Parish. Please correct me if I'm wrong.
Right.
This even happened a couple of weeks ago.
East Cluster too.
East Cluster as well, okay.
They do not.
Okay, my notes just over two. Okay. Maybe I'm reading something else. But anyway, at, at the same time as we're trying to make this decision, Martha Jo let us know that the House Ways and Means has a proposal before them to try, try to attempt to do free lunch for all coming next year. And we won't know that decision. We're hoping to know that decision before the June first deadline. And I think that's probably the goal of the state, to try to have that decision available so that we don't have to make a June first decision. So in addition to talking about the school program, the school lunch program, we talked about the capital projects. A lot of it you've heard tonight when we discussed with Mike Hale, so there wasn't anything new. One topic we did discuss was the preschool. We brought that up earlier, Laura. We talked about, because we're gonna have to be making a decision at some point in the near future of whether we're gonna move forward asking the city to purchase the building or if we're gonna choose to do another space. So Anne Marie Jordan was online with us and she spoke to us. She said that Dore Whitty worked with the faculty at the building. We got some, we also got some staff input regarding what the staff's thoughts were on that building. It was pretty positive. The areas that were positive was the space, the amount of space, the clean space, the size, the parking. Things that they want to do better would be to have dedicated spaces for certain, for certain educational purposes. We were, we were short spaces, I can't be writing, I'm sorry, my eyes are exhausted. Small learning spaces, a playground with accessibility, with better equipment, lighting, better carpets, more custodial staff and more storage for their items and for teachers and therapists to store stuff as well. If it was gonna be a new space, they'd want plenty of bathrooms, child-size appropriate bathrooms. Quadrature playgrounds, confidential spaces, natural light, you know, that would be the wish list if we were to do those in the space. So obviously, no, no decision has been made at this point, but the superintendent's been doing a great job working with Gary to get the information that we'll need to make that decision and also get the staff's voice involved as well. So when the time comes, you'll have an idea of what will be not, not necessarily the best decision, but the most accepted financial decision on how we're gonna move forward with the preschool. We got a update on our fiscal two thousand twenty two budget and Gary, correct me if I'm wrong, but we're under budget by a hundred and forty eight thousand eight hundred and eleven this year, which is great. And then finally, we did review the transfers. The transfers, you can see the information in his packet. There was a motion that came forward that we recommended to the full committee to approve those transfer, transfers, and we did. So I so moved that motion now for the committee as a whole to vote those motions, that, those transfers. Are you moving it now?
I'm moving, making the motion.
Were they? Sorry.
Yeah, I thought it stopped.
Okay, great, we already did it, so I don't have to move it. I withdraw my motion.
Any questions? Just one, yeah. When are we, I don't remember when it's on our schedule to make a decision about that building.
If we have one more year, full year, and the, the lease agreement has a timeline in it, because we have the ability to purchase it. We have to get the city notice if we're not going to. So that is driven by the lease agreement, which I believe we have one more year.
So just with two more years in the lease after, after August, two more years, but we have, we have the option to buy and next, late next spring.
Right, so, and I know you were in the process of collecting information.
Yeah, and, and, and one of the next steps is starting, so we have essentially what we need in terms of space now. We're finding it so. But next step will be to start working with city on, just discuss them about, about, you know. If the city is looking for additional space as well, I can work with them together on that. That's, that's probably, that's one of the next steps. And also, you know, and then, and then at the same time, look at some space utilization, sorry. Take a closer look at the study that was done. About three years ago, I believe. And so those are the two immediate steps.
I can't help but wonder though, I mean, because it is a year from now, that's why I say the year, I know it's a two-year lease. But I really think we should, some representation should be speaking with administration at some point to find out what the thought process is on, from the administration side, the city administration side, city administrations, because if they do decide that this isn't the correct path to go on, and we haven't even decided this is the correct path to go on, what is the alternative and what time do we have knowing the lease expires in two years? You know, if we choose, if the decision is not to go forward with this space, can another space be built out in two years?
Yeah, no, right, right.
So even though we essentially have a year to make the decision, we really need to.
The original timeline, the original timeline that I proposed, that I, that we were aiming for was to decide, you know, this, you know, before the end of school. Can't do that at this point. But, but need to very early next school.
Absolutely.
Yeah, yeah, but that, that's, that's, so we're aiming for that now.
Thank you for your report. Okay, well, we have one item of action. It's an acceptance of the grant from the Gloucester Education Foundation and they vowed two hundred dollars to pay for the bus for the senior art field trip to the Isabella Stewart Gardner Museum in May two thousand twenty two.
So much.
Second.
Thank you, Gloucester Education.
Okay. Okay, Laura?
Yes.
So?
Yes.
Me? Yes. Melissa?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Five two zero.
Okay.
Things.
Okay. Anybody want to say anything under discussion of your business apparently?
Just two things. One, because it may be a, a subcommittee. So as, as I laid out in my, in our, you know, in this sort of the big rocks with current comments here, one of them is in advance of the new school being completed, by this fall, we have to make an update to the school assignment, the school zone, school assignment. And so we're doing it at work now. I would like to bring to the committee or at least first big subcommittee, just sort of the criteria we're, we're, we want to be using. And also the stuff we're learning about it. So in terms of updates, the school zones. What's the pro, what's the first place, magic comes directly to the school committee, at the full, full committee or is appropriate for one of the subcommittees to look at first? Owen?
I didn't.
So, so in terms of, we have to, we have to update the school zones.
Zones, you mean the
Simon's zones, where people live and what's on their school.
District, the management, cash management.
And, and so we've got to update the cashman areas in advance of the new school opening.
Okay.
We need that resolved. And we're on a timeline with the work we're doing to have that, you know, solved in the beginning of next school year, so people know, oh, advance, okay. I've been doing work on it. I want to give the committee or, or a subcommittee an update on that. Also, we don't just sort of get some input on the process from you. Is that a subcommittee, is it the full committee? I don't have a preference. I'm sure it looks.
It seems like it would be full committee. Does it really fall into the?
Well, I mean, we have enough committees, we can, I mean, as, as far as the exact title of the subcommittee, we just find a way to cover everything. But I would say, is there work to be done on it? Is it more informational and you just need feedback?
It's informational and sort of, you know, one of the things that I, I turn the committee forward is very helpful is, you know, what are we missing here?
Yeah.
That sort of thing. That, that's, you know, what, what, what have we not considered? What should we still consider? That's what I'm thinking. So it's an update on where we are. It's not, and it's, and all, and the process we're doing and the criteria we're going to be using as we, you know, consider it. And then it's, then the question to committee is, you know, what, what are we missing here? What should we consider or not?
So I would say it's probably presented to the full committee and if we identify issues, then it can be referred to subcommittee if there's work to be done. That's how I would recommend it.
I have this question, just looking at this list of what's on our agenda for the next meetings. Realistically, I mean, you know, just realistically, this could be August.
But August, you're like.
It can't be August if it's.
How about you and I work out that?
Okay.
When, by here, the full, bring in full school committees, it's right.
Unless you think subcommittee's quicker, I mean, I'm not trying to.
No, I think it's, I think it's, I, I.
No, it feels like okay, I'm just really sort of specifically at what's.
Need to work it out. I, yeah, we can work, we can figure it out. Okay, great, that's real. And then the last piece, just a heads up, for, for next school committee meeting, we're gonna be putting, giving to you and therefore, you know, everybody. Just the schedule of all the sort of year-end events, celebrations, you know.
Award nights.
Award nights, you know, that are happening, you know, you know, through all the schools basically. Just so folks can, can see what the breadth of it is first of all, which is, you know, great for, you know, celebratory obviously in many ways. And then also, and then just, just so we have a sense of what updates going on, so.
Right.
And just wanted to, that's coming to work.
It's a super busy time.
Join me in being a parent of a senior, that's a really busy time.
Right. That's all.
Okay. All right. Definitely not say, we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Laura? Yes. So?
Yes.
Kathy? Yes. Melissa?
No.
Uh, yes, I think you're outmoded.
All right. Thank you, everyone. Great topic. Great. Thank you.